Mayor Weiss?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Felder?
Here.
Councilmember Keim?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Before we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, I would just wanted to, in lieu of a formal invocation, if you could please stand, I'd like to take just a moment and read a statement in regards to at least the recognizing the honor and the events that happened last week. It is with deep sadness that the City of Oceanside recognizes the Marines who lost their lives in last week's training accident. We are longtime partners with Camp Pendleton and proudly welcome Marines as they visit our city while serving. While none of those killed were Oceanside natives, all call this area home while stationed on base, and we count them as members of our community. Last Thursday, eight Marines and sailors were killed off the coast of California. Corporal Cesar Villanueva, 21-years-old, Riverside, California. Private First Class Brian Baltiara, 19-years-old, Corona, California. Private First Class Evan Bath, 19-years-old, Oak Creek, Wisconsin. Lance Corporal Chase Sweetwood, 19-years-old, Portland, Oregon. U.S. Navy Hospital Man Christopher Nem, 22-years-old, Stockton, California. Lance Corporal Guillermo Perez, 20-years-old, New Braunfels, Texas. Lance Corporal Marco Bronco, 21-years-old, Montebello, California. Private First Class Jack Ryan Ostrowski, 21-years-old, Bend, Oregon. And Captain Wesley Rod, 23-years-old, of Harris, Texas. On behalf of the City Council and the entire City of Oceanside, I would like to express our heartfelt gratitude for their service to our country and the service of all men and women in our military. At the closing of today's council meeting, I will be asking council to adjourn the meeting in their memories. In the meantime, I hope that our entire community will join me in prayer for these families during this tragic time. Eternal rest granted to them, O Lord, and may perpetual light shine upon them. Amen. So if you'd join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Mr. Mullen?
Thank you. The City Council met in closed session to discuss several items. First, conference with labor counsel, labor negotiator, excuse me, on the status of negotiations involving MECO and the Western Council of Engineers. Council also met on item two, conference with legal counsel on existing litigation in the matter of Susan Behr versus City of Oceanside and the NRF Project Owner LLC versus City of Oceanside. And finally, the council met on item three C, conference with real property negotiator involving the property at 804 Peerview Way, negotiating parties City of Oceanside and Kruger Wilkinson 1999 Trust, 72399, negotiator for City Vicki Gutierrez, under negotiations, price and terms for the lease of real property. There's no reportable action under the Brown Act on any of those items. The council did not meet on item 3A and 3B.
Thank you. We'll go to our consent calendar, five through 21. Mr. Navarro, do we have any requests on any of those items?
No requests on any of those items.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Move approval.
We have a motion, a second. Please vote.
Approve, 5-0.
With that, we'll go to item 22, which is approval of a five-year purchase order in the amount of $1.8 million for the purchase of 225 body-worn cameras. Chief?
Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers, thank you very much. Captain Marchand will be doing a presentation with you tonight, but just briefly before he starts his presentation, just a little historical data. The City of Oceanside, the Police Department specifically, was entered into an agreement with a company that provided us with body-worn cameras, free of charge, which was a great opportunity for us, and it also provided our officers the opportunity to have body-worn cameras. This company, because it was free of charge, is no longer able to sustain a program that's meeting the needs of our department. And more importantly, because of all of the events that have happened in the recent past few months, our police officers actually don't even want to go out in the field anymore without a camera. So we've had a number of our cameras that have broke, which means that we have police officers that need to go out into the field, and quite frankly, it's, they're resistant to do that just because of the fact they don't have a camera to be able to justify their actions because of, in light of how things are in the environment today. So that's kind of the basis for the base, this presentation that Captain Marchand will be doing for you today. With that, I do have a camera here on what we are looking at purchasing. I'll be more than happy to pass around the dais while Captain Marchand's doing his presentation if you'd like to take a look at it.
Approve, 5-0. With that, we'll go to item 22, which is approval of a five-year purchase order in the amount of $1.8 million for the purchase of 225 body-worn cameras.
You've been muted. To unmute yourself, press star six.
Chief? Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers, thank you very much. Captain Marchand will be doing a presentation with you tonight, but just briefly before he starts his presentation, just a little historical data. The City of Oceanside, the Police Department-
You are no longer muted.
...company that provided us with body-worn cameras, free of charge, which was a great opportunity for us, and it also provided our officers the opportunity to have body-worn cameras. This company, because it was free of charge, is no longer able to sustain a program that's meeting the needs of our-
Thank you, Chief McCoy. Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. I'm here to speak to you tonight about the purchase of 225 body-worn cameras and evidence storage for the video produced by those cameras. Staff recommends that the City Council approve a purchase order for a five-year contract in an amount not to exceed $1,885,625 to Axon Enterprise Incorporated for the purchase of 225 body-worn cameras or BWCs and unlimited data storage for video captured by those devices. Appropriate $553,012 from general fund assigned accounts and authorize financial services director or designate to execute the purchase order. By way of background, body-worn cameras are individual electronic devices that I believe you're looking at at this moment. They're assigned to and worn by sworn staff at the Police Department, and these assist with the memorialization of contact with members of the public. Depicted here are officers in the two different versions of our uniforms and approximate location of the body-worn cameras, center chest on both of them. These are the current body-worn cameras that we are using, but we're looking to transition to the Axon as our vendor. Our current evidence storage is on-premise, hardware-based, and has some physical limitations on storage. We have faced some problems with this system throughout the life of it, specifically viewing video off-site by allied agencies, including- -and the age of the system itself. It's approx- 1.88 million over five years. Year one is $553,012. Years two through five are $333,153. Year one will be paid for, we're proposing it to be paid for through general fund assigned funds, specifically those in the computer-aided dispatch and infrastructure. Year two through five to be included through the budget planning process. And finally, as I stated at the beginning, staff recommends that the City Council approve a purchase order for a five-year contract in an amount not to exceed $1,885,625 to Axon Enterprise Incorporated for the purchase of 225 body-worn cameras and unlimited data storage for video captured by those devices. Appropriate $553,012 from general fund assigned accounts and authorize the financial services director or designate to execute the purchase order.
Thank you. Do we have any public?
No public.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. A couple of questions before I make the motion. So this is moving into a different model and company. Will this be a leasing program, or will this be buying the product?
It's buying the product, the devices themselves. Built into the contract, there are two replacement phases for those cameras, so we're getting an initial outlay of cameras, and then about year two and a half, we're getting replacement cameras, and at four and a half, we're getting replacement cameras again.
Is that how often they, you need an upgrade?
About the batteries on these devices, because of the daily charging and everything, lasts around three years, two and a half to three years, so we're going to be in a replacement process just prior to that becoming a significant issue.
So before the end of a five-year, do you intend to renegotiate another program, or like, would we be owning these at the end of that, or-
At the end-
Then for a new model?
Another contract or another vendor at year five.
Okay, thank you. I want to say that I remember when body cams first came out, there was some reluctance on, you know, police, some police officers and also the public. I think there was like, oh wow, wouldn't be on camera the entire time there's a contact. And you're right, I think that that makes us all much more honest, you know, about what is happening, and that officers now are reluctant to go out in the field without it is really fantastic. It's reassuring, and it does provide best practices. I think it is something that we're all, it is a goal for everyone, but also the idea that we can improve the contacts and relationships. So I'm really, really happy that this is before us, and I'm going to go ahead and move approval. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Felder?
I'll second. Sorry that I didn't hear everything you were saying because of the mask, but I would, I want to make sure I'm clear as to what the replacement is for these. So you're ordering 225. Do they all come at once, or they come-
Yeah, they will all come at once and be issued immediately. And then if a device breaks or it malfunctions for some reason, we get it replaced by the vendor.
That's the warranty?
That's the warranty. And at year two and a half, we have a strategy built into the contract to replace those devices prior to having the issues that inevitably occur when a device is used on a daily basis, such as a body-worn camera.
Okay, very good.
And Deputy Mayor, if I could say one thing. So it is a big price tag, but you look at body cameras like you look at a razor. So the razor doesn't cost the money, it's the blades. So the cameras don't cost the money, it's the storage. So the bulk of this fee that we are paying is for the storage, and that's because these cameras record every day that these police officers are out there, and the storage has to be kept by law. So that is the biggest cost factor of this whole program, is the storage.
Storage for how long, Chief?
Depending on, depending on the type of case. If it's a murder case, it has to be kept forever. If it's a felony case, it has to be kept for at least three years. It just depends on the type of crime, on how long the storage would have to be maintained.
Well, I already seconded the motion, but I want to commend the officers that were out there operating, even if they were without, that they maintained better than any department that I can, you've seen the ones that didn't maintain as well. So outstanding job for these past several months, and hope this really helps going forward.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I can tell you that we've got a fine Police Department, and the men and women out there are doing a great job for us and for our community.
So I have a question, Chief. You mentioned that the biggest cost is the storage. As part of this financial arrangement we're making, setting money aside for the five years to pay for this, is part of that money going to be available for years six through 10?
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, that'll be the time that we'll have to renegotiate a contract. If we went with a different vendor, then we would have to deal with all of the storage that we have with this particular vendor.
Okay, I got it.
My hope is, to be honest with you, my hope is the way that the country is going, that body-worn cameras will be mandated either by the state or by the federal government, and hopefully we'll get some relief with that by some, hopefully reimbursements or paying for the program itself.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you. You kind of answered my question with your last statement. So we're using this vendor, so because the data's been stored with them, we didn't warrant an RFP to, you know, Wolfcom, for example, or another vendor that offers similar services to see if we can get a better deal at a cheaper cost. So my concern is, I agree with you, I think that there is going in that direction, and there may be additional funding to cover this at some point, but we're having to cover it now, and I have nothing to compare it to other than what we're used to and what we're comfortable with and what we've been using for a long time. I don't know, maybe we could save a half a million dollars, which we really need right now, if we were to attempt to go with another vendor. So my only concern is, you know, we don't know what we don't know. What is the cost of switching, and what would that look like if we needed to merge the data over and the recordings over? Was that ever looked into, Chief?
Councilmember Rodriguez, so one of the issues that we have with our current system is, as Captain Marchand talked about, is the compatibility with the district attorney's office being able to view the video itself. And we're the only agency, I believe in the county at this point, that doesn't have Axon cameras. And one of the reasons why we chose this company is, number one, its reliability, but more importantly, number two, the ease of access for our law enforcement partners to be able to look at the data that's there so it can be used within the court. So specifically to answer your question, I'm not aware of any other police departments that use a third-party cloud system that would, that would hold this data. So if, if we wanted to do something like that, we would probably not be able to use Axon. We'd probably have to go with some different type of vendor, again, because that's where they make their money, is off of the storage.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
We'll go to 23, which is authorization to award a contract and approve a number of agreements and amendments in regards to the Pure Water contract.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Lindsay Leahy, Principal Water Engineer with the Water Utilities Department, here tonight to discuss Pure Water Oceanside Conveyance and Injection Facility Contract Award. Tonight, staff recommends award of contract in an amount not to exceed $7,948,789 to TC Construction Company. Authorize the city engineer to execute change orders up to a total of 10% of the original contract value. Approve a professional services agreement with Valley CM in an amount not to exceed $1,514,039 for construction management services. Approve Amendment 1 to the professional services agreement with Tetra Tech in amount of $283,000 for engineering support services during construction. Approve Amendment 1 to professional services agreement with NV5 in the amount of $68,957 for project outreach. And appropriate $3,335,605 from the water revenue bond proceeds into the project account. And finally, authorize the city manager or designate to execute the contracts and agreements. City Council has given the Water Utilities Department a goal to increase our local water supply to 50% by the year 2030. Currently, we are on track with this progress, and by the completion of the first part of Pure Water Oceanside, we'll have a, 21% of the local water supply will be provided by this project. Pure Water Oceanside consists of two phases, the first being the design phase, and the second phase is five separate construction contracts. Tonight, we are looking at Phase 2B2, which is the conveyance from Paula Road to the injection wells, as well as the equipment for those injection wells. Pure Water Oceanside starts by taking recycled water, running it through a filtration process, then reverse osmosis, ultraviolet light, then conveys that water to groundwater injection wells, which inject that water into the groundwater aquifer. The water travels through the aquifer for approximately six months, where it's then removed from the aquifer, treated at our existing groundwater, Mission Basin Groundwater Purification Facility, and then delivered to customers. The project here tonight is the conveyance pipeline between steps three and four of this Pure Water Oceanside originates at our San Luis Rey Water Reclamation Facility. As shown with the green box at the top of the screen, that is the location of the advanced water purification facility where the water is treated. The green line identifies the conveyance pipeline for the project. Where the green and white circles towards the bottom of the screen are the locations of the injection wells. There will be up to three monitoring wells as well. One is shown on the screen with the blue and white circles where two others are off-screen at this time. The red line here identifies the portion of the project included in this contract, which is the conveyance pipeline from Paula Road and Douglas intersection to the three injection wells. Background on this project, in December of 2015, the department completed a recycled water master plan. In March of 2016, the department completed an indirect potable reuse study. And in April of 2017, the department completed a harbor desalination study. The combination of all these studies identified Pure Water Oceanside as the best project at this time to develop the local source of water at the most economic value to the customers. In April of 2018, council awarded a professional service agreement for the design of Pure Water Oceanside. In December of 2018, Planning Commission adopted a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, as well as approved a conditional use permit for the Pure Water Oceanside project. December of 2019, council awarded Contract 2A for the advanced purification facility. And in April 22nd of 2020, council awarded Contract 2B1, which was the first part of the conveyance project. June 6th of 2020, staff advertised Contract 2B, which is the item here tonight, for public bid. And on July 1st, we held a public bid opening in council chambers. The outreach for this project has been quite extensive. Recently, we were awarded the California Association of Public Information Officials Excellence in Public Information and Communications Award for the Pure Water Outreach Campaign. This campaign includes community presentations, a World of Water Day, which held, welcomed over 500 attendees, Pure Water Oceanside tours and Oceanside school tours, which were taking place prior to coronavirus. We've had media features of over 10 stories, both in print and on the news, as well as issued public surveys and received over 500 responses. The construction bid results for this project, we've received seven bids, and they were publicly opened here in chambers on July 1st. The engineers estimate for this project was $9.1 million, with TC Construction Company being the lowest responsive and responsible bidder with a bid of $7,948,789. The anticipated schedule with an award tonight would include notice to proceed to the contractor on August 19th, mobilization for the project beginning August 30th, Milestone 1, which includes the completion of construction of the conveyance system as well as the equipment for the injection wells of August 27th, 2021, so approximately one year. There is an advanced water purification online milestone for a separate contract, which is January 1st of 2022, and we will be keeping this contractor for this contract onboard through the online portion, the startup and testing of that facility and the whole system. So this contract would complete in February 6th of 2022. For construction management, staff advertised a request for proposals, and two proposals were received and evaluated. Valley CM was ranked the highest based on qualifications as well as cost. The total available balance in the Pure Water Oceanside account as of today is $7,274,158. The combined total estimated cost for construction for this phase of the work is $10,609,763, leaving a deficit of about $3.3 million. So staff is requesting an appropriation of $3,335,605. The funding sources for this project include grants and- The funding sources for this project include grants, an EPA WIFI loan, water revenue bond proceeds, fixed asset replacement funds, water connection fees, as well as there's a pending Bureau of Reclamation grant, which we've applied for and are waiting to hear on selection. If those grant funds are received and awarded, those will directly offset any of the other funding sources. And with that, staff recommends the award of the contract, as well as the authorization and approval of the remaining contracts. And I'm available for other questions.
Thank you. Do we have any public?
No public.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. This is a very, very critical project for the city of Oceanside, and I want to say I appreciate what staff is doing to answer questions from the public. See, there's no public input at this hearing, and it is a very, very large project in terms of funding. And this is directly, a project that will be directly paid for by ratepayers. So it's pretty amazing that we have this level of engagement between the department and this project, and the community. I want to say I'm really glad that we had as many as seven bids on this. It certainly, I think, makes us all feel better in terms of the costs, and you're going through all those bids to ensure, you know, the lowest quality bid. I personally had the opportunity to tour the delta, and I saw the, you know, horrific condition of the delta because of what they called subsidence, and it just was basically not really being responsible and for planning for an entire future of the delta, and that's why now they're looking at such significant costs to try to repair that and find a solution. But subsidence is real whenever you deal with groundwater issues, and this is something that we are very blessed to have, this aquifer. But certainly, taking the responsibility for ensuring its longevity and quality for however long we can have this is something that I take very, very seriously, and I know staff does too. This is a large project. I feel that staff has really done everything, crossed Ts, dotted Is on this. I'm going to go ahead and move that we recommend, that we award the contracts, I guess there are two, and approve the agreements and amendments. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
Thank you. Could you go back to the one slide? It was background, and it showed... Before that. Yeah. So we gave the, we did the April twenty-fifth agreement for design, but recycled water master plan, indirect potable reuse, and harbor desal. Those were all studies to determine if they could be better than the pure water.
Deputy Mayor Feller, City Council, Honorable Mayor. These other studies were developed to identify which projects were best suited for us to take on. So the recycled water master plan looks at the overall citywide development of the recycled water program. This includes potable reuse, which is this type of a project, and non-potable reuse, like recycled water for irrigation. And then, when we discovered that there are possibilities to look at indirect potable reuse, we wanted to look at that study further. So that's where the indirect potable reuse study came into play and identified this Pure Water Oceanside project. Now, that would further provide local water for the city. However, with other projects similar to the desalination plant in Carlsbad, we wanted to make sure that that was, one, feasible, and see if that was a better option for the city here as far as water production and cost. So we went ahead and did that study for the harbor desalination. That study did determine that the project is feasible, however, not as cost-effective as Pure Water Oceanside currently is. So if council wanted to increase our local supply in the future, that is an option for us to move forward with.
That was kind of what I was pointing to, is how we got to pure water. The... The other thing I had a question about was, if our engineer's estimate was nine point one million, would we be at twelve point whatever, four million, if they'd come in, adding that three point three that you're...
Yes, that would increase the contract value for this specific phase.
Okay.
However, we had budgeted for the contract to be nine point one million.
I apologize for not asking. I was out of town until just a day or so ago, and so I'm really trying to... I went through this as best I could and didn't want to take up too much time. Anyway, I second the motion.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you for that presentation. I think that identifying and implementing, you know, local water supplies is huge to the city of Oceanside. It's something that we must move forward on. My concerns on moving forward and approving this at this point have to do with two items. One, we don't have official grant approval. And two, if you could please answer the question on how this was estimated, I'm assuming there was a budget that gave us an estimation on this that we approved in the past, and we ended up with over three million dollar shortage. So if you could answer that for me?
Of course. Councilmember Rodriguez, Honorable Mayor, City Council. So as we progress through the design at each phase of design, thirty, sixty, ninety percent complete, our engineers develop a engineer's estimate for construction costs. At the final completion of design, our engineer had developed the cost, estimated cost of nine point one million dollars for the construction of this specific phase. That includes a very detailed, broken-out list of every component, and that's available if you'd like to see it. And then, the contractors do competitive bid. So that's how we got to the seven point nine million dollars. The only reason that it seems as though we have a deficit, this is actually, the nine point one million dollars has been budgeted. However, it wasn't a part of the appropriations for this fiscal year in the budget process. The advanced water purification contract is a fifty, about fifty-five million dollar contract over the course of about two and a half years. So with the appropriations that were made this fiscal year, that money was encumbered and reserved as part of the advanced water purification contract, even though it won't be spent until next fiscal year. So the budget didn't actually change for the overall project of Pure Water Oceanside itself. We're just advancing, or requesting an advanced appropriation into the contract now that will decrease in appropriation from next fiscal year. If that, does that make sense? So coming June of 2021, we were anticipating, I think, about fourteen million of appropriations into this account through that budget process. We're just requesting that early because that money was reserved for the other contracts that have already been approved.
Got it. So it won't go above fifty-five million. It's just you're moving, you're not asking for more than the total combined fifty-five million is what you're telling me? I just want that on record. So we're not asking ultimately for fifty-eight million. This is just, this is taken from one year and bringing it in earlier.
So the, I just want to clarify, the fifty-five million is for a separate contract with Shimick Construction for a different phase of the project. The overall project costs of Pure Water are around eighty-something million. That overall cost will not increase from this bid.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. And then, I've noticed the discussion of, you know, potential grants, potential grants that will help replenish this, and it sounds really good, but what assurances do we have that we will ever get those funds?
So we have been awarded one grant of the three point one million dollars. I don't have, I will know, and there are no assurances for this grant yet. I will say this specific one for the Title Sixteen win through the Bureau of Reclamation has a short list of projects that are only allowed to receive any funds from this, so it's not open nationwide. There's a very short list. However, the amount that we do receive from that grant is based on how much is budgeted, and I'm not sure, I don't remember how much was actually allocated to the budget off the top of my head, but this was what we requested. If we don't receive it, we can apply again in the next phase of grant appropriations that they make. Again, we can ask, and it just depends on how much is budgeted federally. However, all of the other funding sources are in place and are in line to pay for the project. Just if we receive these grant funds, it will offset the amount of money the city itself is actually paying for the project.
Got it. Thank you. Councilmember Cohn?
Thank you for the presentation. I've been following this project closely, and I want to thank you for the detailed briefing you and Water Utilities Director Carrie Dale gave. I know I couldn't fit my questions in ten minutes. You know, we've been meeting with every step of the way on this project, so I have a lot of confidence in it being implemented correctly. Went to Washington DC and talked to the Bureau of Reclamation about it. We're, you know, we received lots of praise for innovation and the hard work, so I can tell you we've done our due diligence, we've listened, and I think we're getting it right. So thank you for the hard work.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion approved, five oh.
With that, we'll go to item twenty-four, which is introduction of an ordinance, adoption of a resolution regarding holding a general election for ordinance for cannabis tax. And we're going to have a short delay. So Jonathan, if you want to come up, but we're going to have, we need to get Scott on the phone? Well, he said it'd just be a minute.
To pay for the project?
Hello?
Just if we receive these grant funds?
Hello, this is Mark.
Hi, Mark. This is Andy from ITC of Oceanside. We are getting ready to just call you on this. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Yes. So you're getting ready to move on to the item? I heard you were going to take a break first, but it sounds like you're going to move right into it?
We're starting the item.
Okay.
Thank you, honorable mayors and members of the city council. It's a pleasure being here tonight to introduce this item, which relates to a cannabis tax ordinance. As you just heard, we do have a consultant that has been helping us on this matter, HDL, on the line to provide any assistance that we may need during the presentation, or to help respond to any questions that you may have as well. Staff recommends that the city council introduce an ordinance establishing a tax on cannabis business activity, and adopt a resolution calling for the holding of a general municipal election on Tuesday, November third, 2020, for the submission of a proposed ordinance for the establishment of a cannabis business tax, consolidating the election with the statewide election, requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of San Diego to permit the registrar of voters to conduct the election, authorizing the mayor and designated council members to submit ballot arguments in favor of the measure, and directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis. In March 2018, the city council introduced an ordinance amending the city code and zoning ordinance to allow the establishment and operation of several commercial medical cannabis-related uses, including nurseries, cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, and testing. In September of 2018, the city council approved an ordinance allowing the issuance of no more than two local licenses for medical cannabis non-storefront delivery facilities, sometimes referred to as Type Nine non-storefront retailers. In August 2019, the city council directed staff to return with the actions necessary to place a cannabis business tax measure on the November 2020 ballot. Most California cities that allow cannabis businesses have established by a vote of the people a cannabis business tax for the purpose of funding general services. Taxes are also viewed as a way to generate funds for the enforcement of illegal cannabis activities and general city services. As mentioned earlier, following council's authorization to proceed with the cannabis business tax, we did retain the services of a consultant, HDL, to prepare an analysis of a potential cannabis business tax. And I'll add that HDL has probably been involved in most of the cannabis business tax measures throughout the state of California, so they're very well-versed on the topic. The resulting study recommended a taxation program that is fair and not overburdensome to the cannabis industry, which still struggles from competition by the illicit market, and the study is attached to the staff report for reference. The recommended tax rates, which I'll be covering in the next slide, are designed to provide sufficient revenue to offset the impacts of the cannabis industry without compromising the success of our local cannabis businesses. Before I get into discussing the individual tax rates for each of the different business types, I did want to mention a couple of things that I think are important as part of this discussion. First of all, as I'm sure many of you have heard, the legal cannabis industry in California still struggles, primarily due to the illicit market, which still exists. And by some estimates, the illicit market still accounts for about seventy-five percent of cannabis sales throughout the state. In addition to competition from the illicit market, the legal industry also struggles by high taxes that are imposed by the state. If you take a look at the analysis that was prepared by HDL, generally, the goal, overall goal is to not exceed an overall effective tax rate of thirty percent combined for both local and state taxes. And right now, the state already taxes, when you take into account the state taxes, you're already up to, close to about over twenty-five percent. So there's very little margin for local cities to work with in order to ensure a competitive local market. I will also add that when we were going through the analysis, and again, these rates are the rates that were recommended by HDL, and certainly, we concur with them, but the overall goal really was essentially to ensure that our local cannabis businesses, which are still, you know, obviously in their initial stages, are competitive and have a chance to compete with the black market or the illicit market. So going line by line here, in terms of manufacturing, as you can see, the recommended tax ranges for manufacturing are between two, two point five percent and six percent. The initial recommended rate, recommended by staff, is four percent, and you can go and go across the line there and see the anticipated annual revenue. One thing that I do want to point out, before I go any further though, is as part of tonight's action, we are not establishing the recommended initial rate. I know some of the correspondence that we receive related to that initial rate. That initial rate would actually be set by a subsequent council action, assuming that the voters approve this measure in November. So at that point in time is when we would actually set the initial rate. All the action that we would be taking this evening and that the voters would be voting on in November would actually be to establish the tax range. As far as distribution goes, as you can see, the rate is between two and six percent, and these are percents of grocery receipts, by the way, I didn't mention that. You can see the recommended initial rate at three percent, cannabis cultivation. As you may recall, initially, staff was recommending a tax rate based on square footage of licensed canopy area. We did hear quite a bit from our local licensed cultivators who strongly objected to that formula, thinking that it would unfairly penalize businesses that are just starting to get off the ground here and again, still competing with the illicit market. While taxing on a square foot per canopy basis is probably the most popular way to do it throughout the state, there are a number of municipalities that also tax on grocery receipts. So in consultation with HDL, we certainly are supportive of actually taxing now on a grocery receipts basis, which is what you see here today, which we believe is, you know, probably does provide a more fair initial rate to our cultivators, and certainly, the feedback that I've received from the cultivators following this change has been positive. On the retail side, four to six percent range, with the recommended initial rate at five percent. As I've mentioned to some, again, we won't be setting the initial rate unless the measure is first approved by the voters in November. At that point, we'll reevaluate the recommended initial rates, and I can tell you, just in terms of the research that I've done on this topic, there are a number of municipalities that are actually looking at lowering their taxes. So while some may look at these tax rates as being low, and compared to some of our neighbors or other cities... and compared to some of our neighbors or other cities in the state, I can tell you that there are a number of cities in the state that are actually looking at lowering their rates because of the stubborn illicit market that's out there and the fact that the state has continued to raise the state rates, which again, puts more pressure on these businesses. In terms of some additional details of the proposed ordinance, the ordinance does allow the council, council to adjust the rates within the specified ranges without the need for further approval from the voters. We could not exceed the established ranges without another vote. So we do have the ability and flexibility to adjust the rates between the ranges, but not exceed them. Requires remittance of taxes due in arrears on a monthly basis with interest and penalties for failure to timely remit. And specifies that a violation of the new tax provisions is a misdemeanor. In terms of the ballot measure, the proposed ballot measure would adopt a tax ordinance, which would establish the tax ranges, as well as all the fine details in terms of how the taxation program is administered. It would require a simple majority vote of the Oceanside voters. The tax would become effective or would actually begin, begin implemented on January 1st, 2021. As I've mentioned a couple of times, the initial rate would be set through a future council action subsequent to the November election if it is approved. As mentioned in the earlier slides, the estimated revenues are between 1.3 million to 2.9 million annually, based on the proposed tax ranges. And the tax rate, the tax proceeds can be spent on any lawful general government purpose, which is includes things like parks, streets, public safety, including enhanced enforcement of the illicit market, youth services, senior services. It is a general tax, so we do have complete flexibility in terms of how that revenue is spent. So with that, staff recommends that the city council introduce an ordinance establishing a tax on cannabis business activity, adopt a resolution calling for the holding of a general municipal election on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020, for the submission of a proposed ordinance for the establishment of a cannabis business tax, consolidating the election with the statewide election, requesting the board of supervisors of the county of San Diego to permit the registrar of voters to conduct the election, authorizing the mayor and designated council members to submit ballot arguments in favor of the measure, and directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions. And as mentioned earlier, we do have a representative from HDL on the line as well that can speak to any questions as well.
Thank you. We have public?
Yes, we do. On item number 24, the city clerk's office received nine comments, including three voicemails. Eight comments were against the item, one had no position. And of these comments, only four asked to be read into the record. Our first comment is from Gracie Morgan. "As a director of operations for Medleaf Delivery, your first licensed medical delivery service, I am in opposition of the blanket language in the proposed tax. Taxing the adult use sector is encouraged. Taxing our medical patients is unethical. California medical patients already incur additional costs entered the medical market. Adult use would provide Oceanside the opportunity to collect Canna taxes from tourists. Like cultivation has been allotted adult use, Oceanside would benefit most from an adult use delivery service tax." Gracie Morgan, Director of Operations, General Manager, Medleaf Delivery. Our next public comment is from Amber Newman. "Absent allowing adult use opportunities for all aspects of the cannabis industry in Oceanside, this tax will put the burden of creating cannabis revenue for the city on two places it shouldn't be. The bottom lines of wholesale companies with narrow margins, whose business-to-business transactions wouldn't normally be subjected to tax, and worse yet, in the wallets of patients who are already strapped by exorbitant taxes applied by the state and reduced incomes thanks to COVID. I know we're all hurting right now and understand that the city needs to explore all possible revenue opportunities. But do we really want Oceanside to have the reputation of being the city that chooses to profit off the illnesses of its residents? I urge you to reject this proposal as drafted and only allow it to move forward contingent on Oceanside allowing adult use for manufacturing, distribution, and retail. I also urge you to end the city's relationship with HDL Consulting and opt instead to seek out a consultant that is more interested in seeing the industry succeed than it is in helping it fail. Please amend or reject Agenda Item 24. Thank you for your time, Amber Newman." Our next public comment is from Terri Ann Skelly. "I am a parent of three young men. I live and work in San Diego doing public health education, primarily with youth. One of my goals is to make sure that young people have the scientific facts they need to know about marijuana, since the pot industry's marketing campaigns and normalization efforts have led to a record number of kids who have viewed pot a harmless. The U.S. Surgeon General Jerome Adams states "The marijuana available today is much stronger than previous versions." His report says that concentrates used in waxes, dabs, vape pens, and edibles contain more than 75% tetrahydrocannabinol, or THC. The reports also state that the risk of physical dependence, addiction, and other negative consequences increase with exposure of high concentrations of THC. Higher doses of THC are more likely to produce anxiety, agitation, paranoia, and psychosis. Frequent marijuana use during adolescence is associated with changes in the areas of the brain involved in attention, memory, decision-making, and motivation. Chronic use is linked to declines in IQ, school performances, that jeopardizes professional and social achievements and life satisfaction. Regular use of marijuana in adolescence is linked to increased rates of school absence and dropout, as well as suicide attempts. Marijuana use is also linked to risk for early onset psychotic disorder, such as schizophrenia. The risk disorders increase with the measure of use, potency, and age at first use. I would like the Oceanside City Council to know that the San Diego Board of Supervisors continued their ban of marijuana businesses this morning. I am very happy with their decision and their continued support of our youth in San Diego. I am hoping that your council will follow their lead in protecting our children." Terri Ann Skelly. Our final public comment is from Peggy Walker. "Good evening. With expansion of commercial marijuana businesses a looming issue in the city, I would like the city council to be aware that this morning, the county board of supervisors turned down a proposal to reverse a complete ban on marijuana businesses in unincorporated parts of the county. What is important about this action is that the board of supervisors recognized the many community and personal risks of allowing marijuana businesses, including the potential for crime, odor issues, impaired driving, fatal crashes, addiction, schizophrenia, psychosis, cognitive impairment, lowering of IQ for young users, a normalization that's harmful to youth, and reduced property values. In addition, health experts warn repeatedly that smoking or vaping marijuana puts users at higher risk for serious COVID disease. These risks strongly outweigh the benefits of a small sales tax increase, which does not always address the costly rise in law and code enforcement needed. There are just some of the reasons that 80% of California cities do not allow marijuana businesses. Please keep this in mind as you move forward." Thank you, Peggy Walker. And that concludes the public comment for item number 24.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. What we have before us is not about legalization. It's actually about taxation. And for us here, it's the, the ideas that we need to balance. When I, when I saw the, the tax, the proposed tax rates, I have to say, in comparison to other cities, initially, I was like, oh, we're not even competing with the other cities in terms of, of the, the range. But in talking more with the staff, I understand that adding to that sales tax and state sales tax and, you know, other things, that it goes up to 30%. San Diego, for example, retail, San Diego's up to 15%. Vista up to 10%. And Chula Vista up to 15% with respect to the high end of the range. And we're, here, we're talking about up to 6%. What their current rates are, San Diego, 8%. Vista, 7%. Chula Vista, 7%. That's again, above our range. But I understand that the whole idea here is to provide access and to not make it so that it's so difficult to be able to provide that access. And also, the state, you know, in, in putting forth the measure, the whole idea was also for the taxation was to be able to recoup some of the funds that are used for, you know, implementing legalization, but also reinvest in those communities that have suffered so long because of criminalization. And that is a discussion that I look forward to having, hopefully after November, that it passes. How, you know, where this is going to go. It is a general sales tax, so that means it can be used for any, any lawful purpose when we're talking about general fund expenditures. But I, I do feel that very strongly that we need to also consider reinvesting in those neighborhoods, those poverty neighborhoods where enforcement was unduly, you know, heavier and, and which is why we see a lot more people of color in jail and prison, mostly because of, of drug convictions, drug charges. So I have been persuaded that we, we ought to look at or adopt this as a range that is more along reality and, and ensuring that it's not going to be a burden. So I'm going to go ahead and move introduction of the ordinance and also that we adopt the resolution so that this could be on the ballot this November 3rd. I, I do feel that this is something that we anticipated to do, so I'm looking forward to this. Thank you.
Seeing no other lights, I will second the motion. Deputy Mayor Feller?
Thank you. Is this about marijuana?
Right now, the way that the, is just for the, for the benefit of the audience, as the council knows, as of today, the city's regulations only allow for medical use businesses, with the exception of cultivation, which we did recently change the code to allow adult use cultivation in addition to medical. The way that the tax ordinance is structured is that it would actually apply to future adult use as well, should that ever become legal beyond its current scope in the city. So we wouldn't have to go back for a second vote. It would actually apply to that market as well.
I apologize. I guess I didn't have my mic on. So we're already kind of assuming that it, it's going to be something that we're going to approve in the future. Frankly, I'd probably be, if I was in favor of a tax, I would be thinking that it needs to be a lot more than what you're proposing. I don't think our children deserve this. And I don't think illegal marijuana is ever going to be out of the picture, illegal, illicit drugs. I, I, I think that the police have enough things to do besides patrolling the community with all the, the legal use and, and the, the medical use is what was promised in the first place. And, and now it's, you know, it's going the other way. I just, I don't think that it's fair to our children, my children, anybody's children, to be putting the, the sales tax for this particular product on their backs. You know, the, and it's, it's going to be a, a bad, bad thing going in the future, I believe. It's already 62% of the people that are in, taken into jails are, the young people are already testing positive for it. And, and 57% of all the young people are already testing positive for the use of marijuana. And that's probably illegal and medical. So unless the tax is raised up to like 25% or something like that, I'm not going to support this.
Mr. Mullen?
Mayor, I just wanted to remind you, I'll need to title the ordinance unless there's any other lights to speak.
There's lights.
Okay.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I wasn't going to speak, but I changed my mind. Currently in the city of Oceanside, as passed by previous council and some since I've been on council, this is, this is legal. It's legal. It's a legal crop to grow. It's a legal crop to sell. We've, we've adopted local control, local ordinance for our cultivators. We've also adopted ordinances for delivery services. This is something that's going on now. And a lot of the community concerns specific to my colleague that just spoke, this is to captivate revenues to offset impacts that cannabis businesses bring to a city, including additional funding for education programs for our children to educate them on issues related to cannabis and, and enforcement to stop the illicit market, the black market, from selling these drugs to our kids. Without those resources, we don't have the funding available to, to go in and shut down and educate our children, or educate our children and shut down these illicit markets. So this is just utilizing strategic foresight and creating additional revenues as a city so that we could mitigate those impacts in the future of what's already legal right now in our city. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Mullen?
Before I title the ordinance, I'll just note one point, and I think it's already clear in Mr. Brago's presentation, but I want it to be crystal clear. There was a slide that showed the recommended ranges for all types of businesses. The ordinance specifically states that the range for distributors, manufacturers, and retailers is between 2% and 6%. For cultivators, it's a cap of 3.5% of grocery receipts. So that's what's going before the voters. You, you obviously will have, if it passes, will have the ability to fix a rate within that range. But I wanted to be clear about the 2% to 6% range in case there is any question. You do have the election reso. That's part of the motion. I'll need to title the introduction of this ordinance. So this is an ordinance of the city of Oceanside, adding Article 5 to Chapter 34 of the Oceanside City Code, establishing a tax on cannabis business activity.
Please vote. Motion approved, 401. Feller, no? Thanks for being on the phone. With that, we'll go to our 6 o'clock public hearing item, which is adoption of a resolution updating, to adopting updating CECL requirements for vehicle miles traveled. And I will open the public hearing. We'll start with disclosures.
We've had a number of council emails and as well, individuals sending us their opinions. So the public, staff, developers, I think that's pretty much it. Thanks.
Public, staff. Staff, and we've received a number of emails and phone calls over the last few days from the public.
Public, including, I asked my aide to count them since I had not counted them, 123 plus seven emails in support and asking for stronger language. Thank you.
Public, staff.
Oh, sorry. My apologies. My apologies. I did have some emails. I did have some emails on this, too. Sorry.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Weiss, Deputy Mayor, council members. I'm Tiffany Chen with the Planning Division. Tonight, we are considering a proposed update to our local CEQA guidelines to review transportation-related impacts on the environment using vehicle miles traveled or VMT per Senate Bill 743. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution to update the city's local CEQA guidelines to establish local thresholds of significance and local control for the review of transportation impacts based on VMT. In 2013, Governor Brown signed SB 743 into law to better align CEQA with state policies that promote public health, infill development, multimodal transportation networks, and the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. The purpose of SB 743 is to more effectively analyze and disclose a proposed project's transportation-related impacts on the environment as part of the CEQA review process before a decision on a project is made. SB 743 went into effect on July 1st of this year. In 2018, the state CEQA guidelines were updated to specify vehicle miles traveled or VMT as the appropriate metric to measure transportation impacts. Thus, a project's effect on automobile delay and roadway congestion previously measured by Level of Service, or LOS, no longer constitutes an environmental impact. This change in focus to VMT from LOS will result in more pedestrian, bicycle, and transit improvements to reduce reliance on automobiles. This is a significant shift and is in line with other initiatives such as our Climate Action Plan. The Governor's Office of Planning and Research, OPR, released a technical advisory in 2018 with the recommendations to help facilitate implementation of SB 743. In 2019, the Institute of Traffic Engineers, ITE San Diego Section, also published guidelines and recommendations for implementing SB 743 in the San Diego region. I'll go into the differences between OPR and ITE San Diego recommendations in a later Local jurisdictions may but are not required to adopt local guidelines and significance thresholds. The local guidelines could be based on recommendations by OPR or local regional studies such as ITE San Diego's. Jurisdictions could also determine their own thresholds based on substantial evidence. The consequences of not adopting local guidelines include applicants being able to choose their own methodologies and thresholds to follow, which would lead to inconsistencies. We would also expect that there would be longer project processing times from the ambiguity of transportation analyses using different thresholds. VMT is the total number of miles a vehicle travels from each origin to a destination. In the example below, the vehicle originates and ends at a home and makes stops to and from an office during the day. The total VMT for this trip is 15 miles or 15 VMT. When defining VMT for CEQA analysis, it depends on the land use or project type. Residential land use is measured in VMT per capita, employment in VMT per employee, and other land uses in total regional VMT. Going back to the recommendations by OPR and ITE San Diego, each has a different definition of a small project, and they're both based on different supporting evidence. OPR recommends defining a small project as one that generates less than 110 average daily trips, or ADT, and recommends a significance threshold of 15% below or 85% of the regional average VMT. ITE San Diego, which is comprised of transportation engineers and professionals, has chosen to maintain the same thresholds that have been used for the last 20 years. These thresholds translate a small project to being defined as below 500 ADT if the project is inconsistent with the general plan and below 1,000 ADT if consistent with the general plan. Translating the different ADT thresholds to different project types, we would have the OPR threshold of 110 ADT equivalent to 18 apartments, 11 single-family homes, 2,750 square feet of commercial. Under the ITE San Diego thresholds, 500 ADT is equivalent to 83 apartments, 50 single-family homes, and 12,500 square feet of commercial, and 1,000 ADT would be double that of the On June 22nd, staff presented a draft of the local VMT guidelines that were based on ITE San Diego's thresholds to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended using the OPR threshold of 110 ADT rather than ITE San Diego's 500 and 1,000 ADT thresholds due to concern that many projects would be exempt and thus there would likely be less impact in reduction of GHG and vehicle dependence. Outside of the context of CEQA review, the city is still including LOS analysis to retain control over operational issues within the city's transportation network. This will maintain compatibility with the circulation element and seems to be a common approach among other jurisdictions because congestion is still a concern among transportation professionals and the public. Based on Planning Commission's recommendation, our consultant revised the local guidelines to be based on OPR's thresholds, and they have been in effect since July 1st. Staff is supportive of the Planning Commission's recommendation, but we would have no objection should the council opt to approve higher thresholds that were initially recommended. The city's local guidelines would be used by applicants to help prepare their transportation analyses. One of the first steps is to determine if a project would be screened out or exempt from VMT analysis. The guidelines include a table of project types that would be screened out. Some examples include if the project is located in a transit priority area or smart growth opportunity area, projects located in a low VMT generating area per the Sandag VMT screening maps, locally serving retail uses less than 50,000 square feet, and small projects that generate less than 110 ADT. These types of projects are all assumed to have VMT reducing characteristics and thus are exempt. This map from Sandag, which is provided in Appendix B of the guidelines, shows potential TPAs within San Diego County. Zooming in on Oceanside, it shows four potential corridors, generally along Coast Highway, Mission Avenue, Oceanside Boulevard, and SR 78. Staff's interpretation at this time is that the coaster and spinner lines currently qualify as TPAs. If a project is located within a TPA, it must be able to access the transit station within a half-mile walking distance or six-minute walk continuously without discontinuity of sidewalk or obstructions to the route. Qualifying transit stops means a site containing an existing rail transit station served by either a bus or rail transit service or the intersection of two or more bus routes within with 15-minute or less headways during peak commute periods. Sandag's Smart Growth Opportunity Areas, or SGOAs, map shows eight potential sites in Oceanside. However, we are excluding the North River Bus Station since it's not included in the Smart and Sustainable Corridors Plan. The remaining seven are considered to be areas that qualify as SGOAs. This includes the entire downtown area, Coast Highway from Seagate to the Buena Vista Lagoon, and Oceanside Boulevard east of I-5 to just past Crouch Street. It should be noted that the city's general plan update efforts and the Smart and Sustainable Corridors Plan would include additional areas along transportation corridors that could qualify as screenout areas in the future. Projects that are determined to have significant impact would need to implement mitigation measures and strategies to reduce the VMT generated by the project. The goal is to reduce the VMT to below the significance threshold. Mitigation measures should be appropriate for the project type. Sandag's Mobility Management Guidebook contains resources such as the VMT Reduction Calculator Tool, which quantifies different mitigation measures into potential VMT reduction percentages. Some examples of mitigation measures include employer transit pass subsidies and parking pricing. The city could also consider a VMT mitigation fee bank or exchange to fund projects or initiatives that would help reduce GHG and promote VMT reduction within the city. As mentioned earlier, outside of the context of CEQA review, the city may require LOS analysis, like we have before, if a project meets certain ADT thresholds. There are two levels of LOS analysis. A local transportation assessment analyzes fewer scenarios than a local transportation study. Projects may be exempt from LOS review on a case-by-case basis if the project is located within a transit priority area or smart growth opportunity area, or it's not feasible to increase capacity. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution to update the city's local CEQA guidelines to establish local thresholds of significance and local control for the review of transportation impacts based on VMT. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, and our transportation staff and consultant are also available to answer the more technical questions. Thank you.
Mr. Navarro.
On item number 25, the city clerk's office received six comments, one for, three against, and two with no position. There were no voicemails, but two comments did ask to be read into the record. Our first comment is from Autumn Hill. "I am an Oceanside native and recent college graduate that moved back home to my parents' house in Oceanside amid the COVID-19 pandemic. I've always loved growing up in Oceanside, but upon returning home, I was heartbroken by the sudden influx of unnecessary construction and development, especially in the downtown area. I'd like to bring forth some questions and concerns regarding the proposed resolution to adopt the updated California Environmental Quality Act or CEQA guidelines for the review of transportation impacts based on vehicle miles traveled. This resolution to adopt CEQA guidelines is inaccessible and lacking transparency as it fails to recognize the purpose of CEQA as stated below. Disclose to the public the significant environmental effects of a proposed discretionary project through the preparation of an initial study, negative declaration, or environmental impact report. EIR shall be used to provide full public disclosure of the environmental impacts of a proposed project, code sections 21000 through 21004. Prevent or minimize damage to the environment through the development of project alternatives, mitigation measures, and mitigation monitoring. Disclose to the public the agency decision-making process utilized to approve discretionary projects through findings and statements of overriding consideration. Enhance public participation in the environmental review process through scoping meetings, public notice, public review, hearings, and the judicial process. How will the City of Oceanside remain accountable when the majority of the vehicle miles traveled within Oceanside or all destinations that have been considered, screened out, or having to abide by SB 743? As an Oceanside community member, I have witnessed how ongoing private development construction has hindered our environment and creates an increased level of traffic, noise pollution, and air pollution." That is two minutes. Our next comment is from Kai Simovich. "My name is Kaigetsu Simovich. I am an Oceanside resident, and I am writing to address item number 25 on the agenda proposing to adopt the updated CEQA guidelines. The proposed plan fails to take into account the original purpose of CEQA, which is to disclose to the public the environmental effects of a proposed discretionary project. It is unreasonable to assume you can properly inform the public through documents like the Traffic Impact Analysis Guidelines for Vehicle Miles Traveled and Level of Service Assessment, which is so heavily laced with professional jargon that it reads like a clumsy stream of made-up acronyms. It is also unavailable in Spanish, which is disappointingly very telling of which community members you see fit to have access to this kind of information. It is also absurd to assume an environmental impact report provides an accessible and transparent medium to inform the public of the environmental effects of a development. These reports contain crucial pieces of information but contain technical elements that render them inaccessible to everyday folk who just want the facts laid out clean in a way that gives us the agency to participate in our local government the way we should and all be welcome to. I recommend the city contract multiple specialists, train in environmental law that have the capacity to interpret important findings into plain English and Spanish for our community. This may seem like a costly proposal, but if we divest money from the city's already overinflated police budget, we could pay a year's salary of $100,000, not a modest sum by any means, to three individuals for less than 5% of the current $61.83 million budget OPD receives from its residents. Thank you for your time, Kaigetsu Simovich."
And that concludes the public comment. Councilmember Rodriguez.
So I think as a city, as we move, we're getting in the, we're moving in the direction to be pretty, pretty built out, and we have to be very careful and smart with our planning and, and our environment. And so I appreciate and I commend the advisory, you know, the advisory commission of the Planning Commission in wanting to go and shoot for the moon. The only problem I see is we're, we're not there yet as a city. In my opinion, we don't have the, the correct options or opportunities available to the development community to meet the 110 ADT. Because most of our city is built out, when a smaller developer is to come forward and comply with our general plan, there's literally a handful of tools available to try to mitigate. And, and so what ends up happening is it activates an EIR and a lengthy process, and it stalls much-needed housing that we need for our community. Staff has made a recommendation in speaking with Mr. Bregga and planning staff that, you know, we're about six to 12 months away from the development of a VMT bank, which, or a fee that can be charged to developers to mitigate some of these items and greenhouse gases in the future. But right now, there's not a lot of tools available for that mitigation. We're not there yet. We're about six to 12 months away. So while staff is moving on that, I would like to default and then come, come potentially back to the table and default back to staff's original recommendation. We have an amazing planning staff. They, they made a recommendation based on a thorough study that was done, that recommends, and I'll read a little excerpt on this, but number one, moving to 100, 110 average daily trips per day will unduly burden smaller projects and frustrate our ability to meet housing goals. The study that was done in San Diego, which we have the ability to make decisions on and staff actually originally recommended from IT San Diego, states the following. "OPR's recommendations reflect local conditions in San Diego region. Projects that are consistent with the city's general plan with an average daily trips volume, ADT, of less than 1,000 would not need VMT analysis," which would, you know, prompt, if we went to the 110, it would prompt an EIR and a lengthy process, and it would, it would stagnate things. "while projects with 1,000 ADT or greater would. For projects that are not consistent with the general plan," so they're wanting to go outside the box, "the threshold is at 500 ADT." This is, this was staff's initial recommendation. "This approach is determining minimum project size differ from OPR's recommended screening threshold of projects that generate or attract fewer than 110 trips per day. The IT San Diego section based their approach on regional standards for transportation analysis that were documented in the Guidelines of Traffic Impact Studies in the San Diego region." And this documentation dates back two decades. So we have this study that dates back two decades, and we have our city staff, who we, who we trust, bringing their recommendations to currently allow up to 1,000 ADT for projects that are, that conform to the, the general plan and up to 500 for those that don't. Going outside of that is going to put, is going to create a lot of collateral damage until a point in time where staff can go through the analysis and the CEQA process and create a, a fee or a bank for developers to mitigate into. and create a fee or a bank for developers to mitigate into. For example, the rideshare program we just did, we did a study on, you know. Why couldn't developers pay into a fee bank to offset that? Well, that needs to go through SEQA, and we need to make sure that that's a, you know, viable mitigation source in the future. So to move on 110 is just putting the cart before the horse until we have, you know, other options and mitigation measures available to the development community. So I will support this, but I would like to see staff's original recommendations to planning commission. Thank you.
Mr. Bregga, I have a question for you. Would lowering the threshold to the 110, would that, do you feel that would advance or delay the implementation of hitting our arena targets?
Honorable mayor and council members, certainly it could have the effect of slowing development. I mean, there's no doubt about that. You know, as was mentioned during Tiffany's presentation, thankfully, we are in a position where most of our growth is taking place within areas that would be screened out. But, you know, I can say also without a doubt that it would have an impact, and certain projects that might be outside of those areas could be forced to essentially go through a lengthier, more expensive development process. I don't think there's any doubt about that.
And the EIR, in order to make overriding findings, they would do an EIR. Would it be a full EIR on the entire project or focused on just on traffic issues?
It could be a focused EIR, just to focus on traffic impacts, assuming that was the only impact of the project that could not be overridden through mitigation measures.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. Sorry, thank you very much. What is before us is action so that the city can take over local control, and because of state requirements, that is transitioning from LOS, which was Level of Service Analysis, to Vehicle Miles Traveled. And we had been knowing that this was coming for quite a while, right? I remember, I want to say, six or seven years ago, I was hearing that this was going to be what we would be doing. So first of all, I want to thank staff and the planning commission in going through this and looking at the different analyses. I especially appreciate that we're still going to have a level of analysis based on LOS, Level of Service, because we still, you know, are looking at intersections and ensuring that traffic flows. So certainly, it's important to me that we continue to use that analysis. But in meeting the state, the new state laws, the intent, which was SB 743, the intent of the new law, Section 21099-B1, is to promote the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, development of multimodal transportation networks, and a diversity of land uses. And I think what staff did in working through with the planning commission, the planning commissioners actually wanted a lower threshold. That is not what we have before us. What we have before us is a recommendation by staff. So when we talk about a recommendation by staff, we do have a recommendation. It's using the 110 ADT. And that, I think, really balanced where the planning commission really wanted more projects to be analyzed using vehicle miles traveled. But staff's point of saying there's, you know, bottom line is, several of these types of projects are going to be excluded, exempted, excuse me, exempted from that study. So I think what staff has brought before us is a balance, is ensuring that we're meeting the letter and the spirit of the law of SB 743, and also furthering our goals with respect to climate, our climate action plan, and ensuring that we have these other modes of travel. I mean, we have been talking about shuttles for, since I've been on the council. How long is that, 20 years? I've wanted to talk about separating bike paths, Class A bike paths, and starting to have some kind of a bank for making that happen here in Oceanside. So any kind of a bank we're talking about is something that's going to happen here in Oceanside. So I don't know if that was a motion. I prefer what staff is recommending to us. Again, I hear the planning commissioners really wanted a lower threshold to have more projects being able to be analyzed using vehicle miles traveled. Still going to be doing it under an LOS, Level of Service Analysis. I think that we have to act what's in our city's best interest, and if it means, you know, trying to figure out how to help the developer community do that, I'm, you know, I'm open to that, but I think we need to set the standard, and I would like to see staff's recommendation go forward. So I don't know if that, was that a motion? It wasn't a motion, right? I didn't hear a motion. So I would be moving staff's recommendation.
I support staff's former, their former position on following the study of 1,000.
You said you support, but you didn't move. So I would be moving staff's recommendation forward, and I hope that we can do that because this is so critical right now. We're talking about furthering our climate action plan and furthering the quality of life of our residents, which includes, you know, our air quality. I mean, this is something that is so, we've already lost, like somebody said, eight or nine months. Actually, it's over a year. I was looking at the date, May 2019. So it would be nice for us to finally, finally get going, moving forward our climate action plan, and this works hand in hand with that. So I'd be moving staff's recommendation forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Kime?
I have a couple of questions, too. So does this, I'm going down to the 110, does that open up the possibility for very small projects to have to do a full EIR, possibly?
Councilmember Kime, it really depends on the location and whether or not they are able to mitigate their traffic impacts. It's really kind of a combination of those two. As was mentioned, I think, in one of Tiffany's earlier slides, for example, an 18-unit apartment complex would really get you at about that 110 ADT. So if a project came in at 19 units that was not located within a smart growth area or transit corridor, then conceivably, they would have to try and mitigate their ADT impacts below that 85% threshold. And, you know, it could be a challenge depending on, you know, depending on the project, its location and its size.
What, so say they have to do a full EIR, just a ballpark guess, how much could that add on to a project, especially a small one?
I would say probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about $100,000.
Okay, which gets ultimately passed on to the homeowners at some point. I just, I'm concerned with part of it. I think we have, we need to be careful where we develop and how we develop, but if we are going to develop, I want to make sure we focus on workforce housing so that our cops, our firemen, our teachers can live in Oceanside. I think that's our biggest challenge right now. And if, I think if we make, if we add something that could, you know, add a full EIR and those costs onto a small development, it's starting to push those costs to not be attainable to the, you know, the goal we're trying to make is that workforce housing. So I think I would be more supportive of the original staff's recommendation, and then as we go forward, if we can tighten that down. I just don't want to start pushing these entry-level homes beyond that entry-level price point, so.
A point of clarification, the $100,000 estimate is actually for a focused EIR. Full-blown EIR for other impacts is much more expensive than that.
What would be a ballpark for a full EIR?
Probably up to probably a half million dollars, depending on the project. They're not cheap.
So you could potentially add, you know, 30, 40 grand on to the top of a purchase price of a house just with that full EIR?
If it were a full EIR.
Okay, so that's what concerns me. I mean, that would be, I mean, that's our biggest challenge right now is creating that workforce housing. So I am fully on board with getting our greenhouse gases down, but I just don't want to penalize the smallest projects. I think the higher threshold would address the larger projects and allow us to mitigate for that, but, you know, those small infill that we're looking for right now, that, you know, it's not urban sprawl, it's where we want it, just maybe a little outside of a corridor, we could use the higher threshold and keep some of those costs down.
Mr. Bregga, real quick, because I'm hearing greenhouse gas reductions as part of this. If every new residential and office development provided electric vehicles for all of their residents and employees, would that do anything to reduce the VMT?
No, it would not, actually.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Feller?
Question. So I'm going to make a substitute motion that we move staff's original recommendation before the planning commission changed it. There is no reason to make it harder to build and less and more expensive at that if the requirements go up with EIRs and whatever else they can throw in the pot to stop actual development. So I support what you came up with in the beginning. We're fortunate as a city to have built as many homes as we have in where we've built them, because property tax is one of our biggest budget or financial gains for our budget, is paying our bills, and we want more of that type of thing. You can't be sitting in Oceanside and wanting to dumb down everything that we do. So I support this, but with the original 1,000. Thank you.
So apparently, Councilmember Sanchez's motion died for lack of second, and you're making a motion to adopt the ITE standards? We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-1. Sanchez, no.
With that, we will go to item 26, which is the introduction of four zoning ordinance text amendments and number of resolutions regarding the LCP text amendments to establish new standards for a whole host of electric vehicle charging, urban forestry, transportation demand management. We'll open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
I believe we had a number of emails, but as well, we had, I had voicemails and public, other than that, as well as staff.
Christopher? Christopher, disclosure.
Excuse me. Staff and public.
Staff and public, and I'm not sure how many, but I think Councilmember Sanchez will tell us how many.
123 emails, actually of, yeah, 123, and some public conversations, picking up the phone, so yes, thank you.
Staff, public.
Mr. Cunningham, you're up.
Mayor, vice, council members, good evening. I'm Russ Cunningham with the city's planning division. In May of last year, the city council adopted the city's first Climate Action Plan, or CAP, which commits the city to specific actions intended to reduce local greenhouse gas emissions in a manner that's consistent with state goals and guidelines. While most of the measures outlined in the CAP involve city programs, education, incentives, and voluntary actions, a few measures, four precisely, require that new development do more, a bit more, to minimize its carbon footprint. It's these measures and the ordinances required to implement them that we bring before you this evening. Staff seeks the council's adoption of zoning text amendments that codify standards for renewable energy facilities, electric vehicle parking and charging facilities, urban forestry, and transportation management, or transportation demand management, otherwise known as TDM. These standards will implement the city's Climate Action Plan Consistency Checklist. CAP consistency checklists are a common component of recently adopted caps. These checklists ensure that new development complies with the jurisdictions' emissions reduction goals while streamlining the environmental review process for projects that are subject to SEQA. These checklists bring additional clarity and certainty to the project review process, which is why they're generally accepted and supported by the development community. Projects that meet certain locational and development criteria do not have to prepare specific, project-specific emissions impact analyses or show that their projected emissions fall below the city's SEQA thresholds of significance. The locational criteria are these: location within a smart growth opportunity area as identified on Sandag's Smart Growth Concept Map; location within a transit corridor as determined by the forthcoming Smart and Sustainable Corridors specific plan; land use and zoning consistency, and where land use and zoning consistency is not achieved, where ZAs and GPAs are required, projects whose emissions levels would not exceed those associated with land uses that are consistent with land use and zoning standards. Staff is recommending that projects not within SGOAs, not within transit corridors, be required to conduct energy efficiency audits under the auspices of SDGNE. They would not have to accept the findings of those audits, they would simply have to conduct the audit, and also incorporate project features, design features, that reduce vehicle miles traveled 15% below baseline. The development criteria are the four ordinances that we're going to talk about this evening, as well as water utilities requirement that purple pipe, recycled water piping, be installed with new development to ensure that in the future, recycled water service can be provided to those properties. So turning to the ordinances that would implement the checklist, I'll summarize these, and I'll note the caveats that we've built into them. With respect to renewable energy facilities, CAP Measure E2 calls for new development of a certain scale to implement onsite renewable energy facilities that supply 50% of onsite renewable, excuse me, 50% of anticipated electrical demand. So it's important to understand that when we talk about renewable power here or renewable energy, we're talking about electricity specifically. Additions to all development types exceeding 1,500 square feet would be required to render roofs and other site areas solar-ready, which is to say capable of accommodating solar PV in the future, and I can talk more about what that means if you're interested. In the left-hand column are the thresholds for applicability of these standards. CAP Measure TL2 calls for new development subject to state electric vehicle parking requirements to equip a percentage of EV parking spaces with EV charging facilities. We've set the threshold at projects requiring more than four parking spaces. The requirement is to provide 15% of spaces for zero emission vehicles and to equip 50% of those spaces, those reserved spaces, with EV charging facilities. Recognizing that common charging facilities don't work unless you have common parking facilities, we've crafted this alternative standard for multifamily development with private garages, that those garages would be equipped with 220-volt electric outlets which can service Level 2 charging facilities. CAP Measure AF1 calls for new development to establish mature tree canopy and permeable surface area. The standards here are based on site area, as you see in the left-hand column, with larger sites requiring a higher percentage of tree canopy and permeable surface. These standards don't change existing landscape standards, but instead add more specificity to them. Applicants would be required to provide a landscape and tree canopy management plan that would create accountability for long-term maintenance. TDM, or Transportation Demand Management Standards. TDM, or Transportation Demand Management Standards, stem from CAP measure TL5, which calls for employment-oriented development, generating a minimum number of daily commute trips to prepare and implement plans that achieve a minimum alternative commute mode share. Alternative commute trips are defined very simply as those that don't involve single occupancy combustion engine vehicles, driving alone in a single, in a combustion engine vehicle. The recommended standard would apply to non-residential projects generating fifty or more daily employee commute trips. Such projects would be required to prepare and implement TDM plans within twelve months of occupancy and achieve a minimum alternative commute mode share of twenty percent within three years of occupancy. I think you're familiar with many of the common TDM measures: telework, compressed work weeks, car and van pooling, public transportation, active transportation, and for the purposes of GHG emissions reduction, zero emission private vehicles. The TDM ordinance does not prescribe TDM measures but instead leaves it to the development community and to the business community to choose those measures that best suit their circumstances and their operations. In the interest of time, I'm not going to discuss how our recommendations compare with state mandates, but I am prepared to answer any questions you may have regarding the extent to which the recommended standards exceed state standards. All of these recommendations have been developed with an understanding that the city must continue to welcome new housing and new non-residential development to accommodate our regional fair share of housing demand, to grow and diversify the local economy, and to provide essential goods and services to our residents and our visitors. We've worked hard to make these standards as straightforward and reasonable as possible. These standards are consistent with CAP measures and the city's emissions reduction goals. They are physically and financially feasible and in most cases provide a positive return on investment. We've done considerable research in this area and we can share with you cost estimates for renewable energy facilities and electric vehicle charging facilities. They are outcome-based in that they're focused on emissions reduction and not necessarily how that emissions reduction is achieved. They're flexible. Couple of examples: rather than installing onsite renewable energy facilities, in the event that that is deemed infeasible, the ordinance would allow the purchase of a seventy-five percent renewable portfolio, electric portfolio, through available programs. Right now, I can tell you that SDGNE's EcoShare program is fully subscribed, but should they increase the capacity of that, that would be an available option. Should the city move towards CCA, these options would be imminently available. Offsite installation of renewable energy facilities and electric vehicle charging facilities at the recommendation of the BIA. I'm not sure if you've received any correspondence from the BIA on this subject, but staff is amenable to allowing offsite installation of renewable energy facilities and EV charging facilities with the caveat that those facilities be accompanied by an O&amp;M plan and that residential projects meet that offsite requirement in the residential sector and that non-residential projects meet that requirement in the non-residential sector. And we're exploring the possibility with our urban forestry requirements of an in-lu fee option that would establish a tree fund that would allow our public works folks, our street maintenance folks, and people like Mark Garlock to plant more trees in public spaces and on city-owned properties. These standards are integral to an efficient project review process. I established earlier that the CAP consistency checklist would significantly streamline the assessment of GHG emissions under CEQA. We thank the many community members who have provided comment on the checklist and the implementing ordinances. We received input at a community workshop in March, at the Planning Commission meeting in May, and in many conversations and email exchanges with interested parties. Generally speaking, that input recommends more aggressive standards generally across the board. An example would be a lower threshold for the TDM requirement and a higher mode shift requirement. We did agree with members of the public that the requirement established under the CAP would not capture very many projects, so we did make an adjustment, the fifty-trip threshold and the twenty percent alternative mode share requirement, and I could speak to that more should you be interested. The offsite and in-lu fee options that I mentioned before have been advocated in public comment. There are those that would like to see the city set an example with a TDM program for employees and what's called a dividend account parking program in our city hall parking structure. There are those who would like to see the city adopt a no idling ordinance and program, and there are those that would like to see the city move toward building electrification, which is essentially with new development, no natural gas service, all utilities being powered by electricity. So, again, our recommendation is that the city council adopt these zoning text amendments to establish these standards for renewable energy, electric vehicle parking and charging, urban forestry, and TDM. This will implement the Climate Action Plan Consistency Checklist. In closing, I would like to just thank my colleagues. I want to acknowledge the contributions of my partners in this, Scott Nightingale, Shannon Vitale, and Stephanie Cervantes. This was very much a team effort and their collective research and analysis added a lot of value to both the process and the final product. And with that, I'm open to your questions.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro, we have public.
Yes, the city clerk's office received a hundred and seven comments, a hundred and three over four, zero against, three with no position. There is one timely voicemail and the following individuals wish to have their comments read into the record. The following individuals sent the same email, so I'll say their names and then read the email. This is from Candace C., Niam R., Judith Pineta, Anahi Martinez, Mark Cristobal, John Ghihata, Leanna Cortez, and Amelie Kathleen. Dear Oceanside City Council, I am in support of Agenda Item Number 26 regarding Oceanside Climate Action Plan. I urge you to vote yes on this item that would add trees, add electric charging stations, and renewable energy generation, and encourage community for new commuting, for new construction. Thank you, best regards, and signed by the individuals that I just listed. The next comment is from Diane Volkey. Urban forestry is critical to our public mental and environmental health. Trees can cool cities by between thirty-five point six degrees Fahrenheit and forty-six point four degrees Fahrenheit. When planted near building, trees can cut air conditioning use by thirty percent, reduce heating energy use by further twenty to fifty percent. One large tree can absorb three hundred and thirty-seven, three hundred and thirty-point seven pounds of carbon dioxide a year. Filter some airborne pollutants, including fine particulates, increase the value of property by twenty percent. In MRI studies, viewing nature increases blood flow to the part of the brain where empathy and altruism happen. Urban scenes increase flow to the area that triggers fight-or-flight response. A Scottish study found health inequalities related to income deprivation and all-cause mortality and mortality from circulatory diseases were lower in populations living in the greenest areas. Keep it cool, Oceanside, support urban forestry. And Mrs. Volkey included some photos of, it looks like a temperature, along with her email, which was distributed to the council. The next comment is from John Botworf. Please vote yes on Agenda Item Number 26: more local renewable energy, electric car charging station, trees, and less commuting for Oceanside. Support the Climate Action Plan action and vote yes. Thank you. John Botworf, CleanEarthForKids.org. The next comment is from Suzanne Hume. Please vote yes on Agenda Item Number 26 and support the Climate Action Plan for Oceanside. We need to plant trees, put in electrical charging stations, add renewable energy infrastructure, and encourage less commuting. These will add value to our community. We need to plant more trees in Oceanside. Trees provide shade, cool, filter air pollution, sequester carbon dioxide, and prevent erosion and add beauty. We need to provide electric charging stations and renewable energy infrastructure for our city. Thank you to Oceanside staff and Principal Planner Russ Cunningham for working to reduce greenhouse gases emissions, air pollution, and have a better Oceanside. Thank you, have a great day. Suzanne M. Hume, Clean Earth For Kids. The next public comment comes from a concerned citizen. Oceanside City Council, please vote yes on Agenda Item Number 26, as it is important to preserve the environment. New construction should include the addition of trees, adding electrical charging stations, and renewable energy generation. With these new additions, we can start to build a better future for future generations. Thank you. A concerned citizen. The next public comment is from Noah Harris. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Noah Harris, Transportation Policy Advocate with Climate Action Campaign. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the four proposed ordinances to further the city's Climate Action Plan. We urge the city to adopt the zoning ordinance text amendments establishing new standards for renewable energy facilities, electrical vehicle charging facilities, urban forestry, and transportation demand management, all of which are necessary to reducing the city's greenhouse gas emissions, implementing the CAP, and stopping the climate crisis. While these are great first steps, ultimately, Oceanside will need to make bolder commitments to stave off the most devastating threats of climate change. In addition to incorporating onsite renewable energy sources and EV charging infrastructure for certain projects, we urge Oceanside to include the following CAP measures: set a one-hundred percent clean energy target, commit to community choice energy, and eliminate building emissions through building certification. Along with this new transportation demand management plan, the city must set aggressive mode share targets in the CAP for biking, walking, and transit to ensure residents are shifting to sustainable modes of transportation. Finally, we urge the city to expand the CAP's tree canopy target to ensure ample tree coverage across Oceanside, which will help sequester carbon, provide cooling, and improve quality of life for all residents. Thank you for considering these crucial steps to strengthen the Climate Action Plan. Noah Harris, he/him, Transportation Policy Advocate, Climate Action Campaign, San Diego, The next public comment is from Cindy Davenport. Honorable mayor and councilmembers, my name is Cindy Davenport, an Oceanside resident since 2008, at address redacted, and I'm an active Sierra Club member and volunteer as are six hundred other Oceanside residents. I'm glad that our city is finally adopting the first ordinances to begin implementation of our Climate Action Plan, adopted in May 2019. I urge you to adopt these four resolutions and Item 26 to establish these new standards and begin to approve our Oceanside for generations to come. This is only a beginning and much more needs to be done. For instance, new construction should not allow offsite options for the renewable energy and EV charging requirements. For one thing, it's more and more obvious that solar energy on a building or parking structure will reduce the long-term running costs of the new construction. Why wouldn't a business project, why wouldn't a business protect its profitability in the short and long term? And businesses can cultivate positive relationships with employees and customers with parking structures and EV charging stations. Another important part of our Climate Action Plan, although not part of today's resolutions, is Measures AF-3, South Morrow Hills Agricultural Lands Conservation, which lays out schedule milestones and performance targets in Table 18 on pages four through eighteen. For example, the first item to designate a Climate Action Planning Team member to become knowledgeable on SALC, Sustainable Agricultural Lands Conservation Grant Guidelines. The SALC program provides grants of ninety percent of the money to purchase agricultural easements, which are one-time payments to the owner of agricultural land to cover the difference between their land value as agricultural versus as developed land, and an easement is formed that prohibits the land from being developed. The owner can then either continue farming or they can sell the land, but the easement carries over to any, that's two minutes. Our next comment comes from Barbara Collins. As a coastal city that will be severely impacted by sea level rise, Oceanside must show more leadership and do everything we can to ensure a livable future for our children and grandchildren. Effective climate action is the only way to, we can safeguard our economy from the destructive impacts of the climate crisis. We know that delay will only make it worse and more costly to address. Please take action now and put our Climate Action Plan into action. The following individuals from the Sierra Club wish to have their names read into the record to support this agenda item. Agatha Brown, Alessandra Colfi, Alexandra Athens, Alice Newhauser, Andrea Anthony, Andrea Ferrari, Anita Simmons, Anne Easterbrook, Anne Catherine Rock-Lavec, Annette Daust, Ashley Hartman, Ashlyn Gallagher, Ava Stern, Barbara Collins, Barbara Gates, Barbara Pollan, Barbara Tilker, Bob Goldstein, Brandy Lacy, Carlos Sands, Celeste Brock, Charlene Kirkavall, Charles Alger, Charles Weigraff, Chris Gorman, Kristi Sahar, Corey Layton, Crystal Mitchell, Daniel Relahan, Darren Fraul, Deborah Harvey, Deborah Curran, Deborah Huff, Diana Cole, Diane Allen, Diane Goodwin, Diane Volkey, Eleanor Bowen, Elizabeth Osborne, Elliot Brownwin, George Michael Korman, Haley White, Haiki Bochian, Holliday Geiger, Isabel Fried, Jaclyn Bookstein, Jane Daniels, Jared Liebovitz, Jeffrey Conway, Jeffrey Lawson, Jen Dubois, Jesse Osborne, John Brunner, John Rotandi, Josephine Moore, Judy Richardson, Carla Devine, Casey Skinner, Kayla Rodriguez, Kelly Branigan, Kenyon Donahue, Kimberly Talez, Christina Fukuda, Laura Bennett, Lauren Murphy, Lawrence Bungay, Lee Jordan, Lee Keller, Leonard Grossberg, Leslie Davis, Leslie Spoon, Linda Slater, Lisa Keim, Lisa McGinn, Lori Wood, Lynn Graham, Lynn Sondval, Lynn Jeffries, M. Virginia Leslie, Madeline Burke, Mary Gorman, Michael Dubois, Michael Simons, Michelle Leary, Marion Bourne, Nancy Keating, Natalie Hadad, Patricia Hall, Patricia Trioni, Paul James, Peter Cole, R. Huber, Rick Wilson, Rita Sen Sikorsky, Robert Ortiz, Sarah Crook, Sarah Gordon, Sherry Scobie, Sherry Marsh, Cheryl Black, Sinclair Tirona, Stephanie Marie, Stephanie Simpson, Stephen Sikorsky, Susan Greenwald, T.R. Kraljan, Taryn Magnuson, Thomas Conroy, Todd Hartman, Thomas Smith Jr., Valerie Zachary, and Veronica Spinharney, on behalf of the Sierra Club. The next public comment was forwarded to council after the start of today's meeting, but it was arrived before the item was called. This next comment is from Tim Lichterman. Tom Lichterman, thank you. Dear mayor and city councilmembers, I am writing on behalf of the seventy-five-member Oceanside Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee to express support for the staff recommendation on the draft Transportation Demand Management Implementing Ordinance for Oceanside's Climate Action Plan. Implementing the CAP is critical to the future of Oceanside and the state. The Oceanside Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee is a citizens advisory committee whose role is to advise the city on programs and projects which improve bicycling and walking in the community. The committee's membership includes over seventy-five Oceanside residents who are concerned about bicycling and walking infrastructure and opportunities. We're also very concerned about the climate change crisis and have discussed this issue with city staff on numerous occasions, in particular as it relates to cycling and walking as alternative modes to reduce VMT and greenhouse gases. We also have participated in public meetings held by the city on this issue. In response to our meetings and input, staff incorporated two of our key recommendations into the draft ordinance currently before the city council, including: the draft proposed ordinance now lowers the new non-residential development threshold, requiring preparation of a TDM plan to projects that generate fifty or more daily commute trips versus the original proposed one hundred daily commute trips. Given the limited number of large new non-residential projects in the future, this change is crucial to ensure real GHG reductions results from this ordinance. The draft proposed ordinance now calls for TDM plans to achieve a minimum twenty percent reduction in solo occupant auto trips versus the originally proposed ten percent reduction. If each employee at a company If each employee at a company would just commit to taking alternative modes or telecommuting once a week, that would produce a 20% reduction in vehicle miles traveled and associated greenhouse gases. That is a reasonable goal, and that is two minutes." And that concludes the public comment for this item.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. Well, this is a feel-good item, hopefully. I really loved that there was in the staff report reference that on, as of July 30th, just a couple of days ago, all public input conveyed general support for the proposed zoning text amendments, with some responding urging the city to pursue more aggressive emissions reduction measures. What I've read basically echoed by our city clerk was, this is a good first step. And this is very exciting. You know, it's been what's, I started to say, May 2019, so it's over a year that we passed our direction that we adopt a climate action plan and that we implement it. And here we are now. This is a really, really good, I agree, it's a good start. I, there are four ordinances before us, Transportation Demand Management Ordinance, the Renewable Energy Ordinance, the Urban Canopy Ordinance, and the Electric Vehicle Charging Infrastructure Ordinance. There are some other things that I'd like to add to this. I'm going to go ahead and start since it might take some of my 10 minutes. I'm going to go ahead and start by moving to introduce this, the ordinances, and adopt
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I have a couple of questions, just quickly. You guys did an outstanding job of answering a lot of my questions through the Zoom call. We, not Zoom, what does the city use? You guys use?
Skype.
Skype. So I appreciate that. First question, does 26 override or conflict with 25 that we just approved in any way?
I don't believe so, Councilmember Rodriguez. There is a recommendation that the checklist include a requirement that projects that are not within smart growth opportunity areas and that are not within transit areas identified in the forthcoming smart and sustainable corridors plan demonstrate through project design features that they can reduce VMT 15% below baseline. Doing so would, again, streamline the CEQA review process for them, not, not trigger a CEQA review process for that project. So I think that's a fundamental distinction.
Okay. Second question is, I know we need to have a second reading of this. At what point in time does, is the, is it, okay, you're submitting a new application, you have to follow this versus somebody who's actively applying right now or applies tomorrow? How does that work for applicants in implementing this? Like, who's, who's affected by it and at what point in time?
Councilmember Rodriguez, I appreciate that question because I should note that this being citywide, it will require Coastal Commission certification to be applicable to properties within the coastal zone, and that's likely to take several months.
Okay.
Upon the second reading, the provisions would be applicable outside of the coastal zone, and projects that are submitted thereafter would be subject to them.
Got it. So if they have an application in the day before the second reading, they're good, but after that, they, they, you're, you gotta do the checklist?
That's correct. I will say that there are at least a couple of projects that are aware of this work and have essentially volunteered to comply with perhaps not all, but most of their requirements that would be established here.
Got it. And so staff's not gonna, they're, they're not gonna require these items on developers that maybe submitted an application, you know, six months ago, and it's gonna go through the whole process? This is, it's, the burden will happen after, which is a positive burden. This is moving our city in a really amazing direction, and I'm excited to get this implemented, but it's, you know, thereafter is when staff is gonna be like, alright, checklist is out, this is what you gotta do, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, perfect. And then my last question is, I just lost my train of thought. My last question has to do with, I might have to, just like, I was ready to go and then it just, it just left my mind. I'll, if I remember it, it'll come back to me, but thank you for answering those so far.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
Thank you. I'm supposed to have that. I'm, I'm the old guy. This will go with any project going forward, is that correct? Not just housing and, the, these four ordinances apply to any project?
Yeah, I'd be happy, Deputy Mayor Feller, to revisit the thresholds of applicability for these projects, but they do vary. So the renewable requirements are based on the scale of development, the urban forestry requirements are based on the size of the, the property, et cetera. So it is variable.
The standards that we're applying, are they more or less than state, does, does the state have standards that, that we're following in this regard?
The state does, Deputy Mayor, have standards in most of these areas. If we were to simply go with those standards, there would be no point in bringing local ordinances before you. The expectation of the climate action plan is that we will exceed, to some extent, the state's expectations. That has been a little challenging in that, that state code is renewed every few years. We have a new code iteration as of this year, so we've been chasing those standards a little bit, particularly in the realm of electric vehicle charging.
Okay. Can we get palm trees in this? Now, this is for Joan Bachmann, in the canopy.
Deputy Mayor, I think the beauty of the urban forestry standards that Ms. Stephanie Cervantes crafted is that the applicants are at liberty to plant any species of tree they would like to plant.
Okay.
The bottom line is, what will be required to achieve that minimum tree canopy? Palms don't have a lot of tree canopy, but that doesn't preclude a project from planting palm trees. It would probably take a lot of palm trees to meet the canopy requirement, so maybe other canopy trees would have to be provided.
I'm sort of kidding, not so. And we are not part of a CCA yet, is that correct?
I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor.
We're not part of a CCA at this point?
We are not.
I noted that we have down at the Park and Ride at 578, there are about, I think, 12 charging stations in there, probably still brand-new mostly, because I don't think anybody uses them, so, are they free?
I'm not sure that those are, but I appreciate the question, Deputy Mayor, because we have no expectation that required chargers would be free.
Okay.
We would expect certainly in a commercial environment or a non-residential environment that those would likely be paid-for service on the facilities.
And, and nothing we're doing is retroactive?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
In the staff report that you went over in the presentation, you alluded to the potential of a tree in Luffy as, you know, because there's gonna be some developments where, look, they're not gonna be able to mitigate, they're not gonna be able to do the cap, and we still need the project, so I would like to kind of have an idea of when that'll be available so that, you know, not that it's a default, you know, that every developer's just gonna do, but, you know, to be available for those projects that may, maybe can't mitigate for our cap, and, and let's plant some trees, I'm all about that. So what does that look like and what's the timing on being able to offer them?
Councilmember Rodriguez, thank you for the question. I think one of the challenges is really determining how much revenue that fund would actually generate, given that we would expect most projects to meet the requirements on-site. You've given me an opportunity to mention that built into these standards are additional alternatives. In the case of properties that have parkway adjacent to the project frontage that is in the public right-of-way, we would allow some, or in some cases perhaps all of that tree canopy to be implemented in that parkway. We would also allow, at the discretion of the Public Works Director, that trees be planted on alternative sites elsewhere in the city. Again, what-
So that's already built in?
That is already built in. So there are, there's a wide range of alternatives available to applicants that, that can't meet it on the project site. Thank you. Since there was no second, I will second the motion to approve staff's recommendation. Councilmember Sanchez?
Well, I'm glad for the second, yay, we're through the House of Representatives. There were some suggestions for possibly including new tonight, and I'd love to see if we can add. Have a look, thanks, dear. Yes, we are, yes, we think. Anyway, the first one I wanted to see if there's support for is that we require that all new buildings do full electrification. There's no real reason for that.
One of the, the first amendment that I'd like to see if there's support for is to, for requiring new buildings be fully, require new buildings do full electrification. I mean, there's really no need anymore to do gas. It is, it would save, in terms of building expenses, to have everything the same, no gas. It would, it would be kinder to, to the, to, to our climate, and so this is something that several people requested. Is there support for this? Do I hear, would I hear a second on this? Is there a second?
I, I would, after having a chance to read the report, talk to staff, I'm comfortable with what we have in front of us, I would ask staff to go review any of these further suggestions and come back at a later date, but as I do often, I don't like to make decisions based on a lack of information I have just brought at the council meeting.
Okay, let's, let's try this one. I'm not, I'm optimistic tonight, maybe one of three will go forward tonight. Several cities have already talked about doing, going, adopting 100% clean energy targets, 100%. We're at 75%, and by 2030, can we do 100% by 2035? That was one of the things that we are, have been asked by, I don't know, I don't know how many, maybe 50% of the 103-plus or 100 and whatever it was, comments, 123 comments, going, adopting and having the target of 100% clean energy target.
I'd be comfortable, if you want to make those suggestions to staff and have them look at it and bring it back, but as Councilmember Keim said, I'm comfortable with voting on what staff's recommending, and if we have to come back at some future time to reevaluate and change it, I think based on staff's recommendation at that point, we would do that.
Okay. So I'm here, okay, so one more, and, and I think we could do this tonight. There was a request that we create a climate action plan stakeholder committee. So it would be a commission that would include a cross-section of our community, it would include businesses as well. I mean, we are adopting something that we are gonna need input from the public, and to have it always come just to the council, it's, it's, you know, we should really have a commission for this. This is substantial, this is something that we can get together with staff in the community, including businesses, and this is something we can do tonight. It doesn't require, you know, it requires small, small cost in that there, there will be staff working with this, but this is something that I think we need to take a position on tonight and say, yes, let's create this as part of the action tonight. Do we have a second?
I, I would like to speak. I have a question for staff. I really appreciate the passion of my colleague here, but do we have authority as a body to approve any of her recommendations tonight? Yes or no?
I'm gonna address the last one if I can, and then Russ, why don't you follow up? But the, if you wanted to create some kind of stakeholder committee, you could give us direction, we'd have to come back, that's not within what was been agendized. So with respect to creating any new commissions, that would have to be a referral to staff, and we would have to come back at an agendized meeting if there were interest in doing it. Russ, do you want to address the other items?
What City Attorney Mullen said. I will add to that, that we are already, as part of Phase 2 of the general plan update, reevaluating this first iteration of the cap, and it is our expectation as part of the second phase that we will be updating it. So that opportunity does exist to incorporate these suggestions.
Got it.
We're looking at a timeline of, of two to two and a half years, but we're already starting that process.
Got it. So I just, I want to reiterate that, I think that all of us on this dais support doing everything in our power as a city to lower our GHGs and protect our environment and, and, you know, reduce sea level rise, but there is a correct pathway and analysis in doing those things, and I think that if Councilmember Sanchez has some of these passions, I encourage you to get with one of your colleagues and do in a council agenda item to see if you can get support for that, and we can bring it before the public and see if we can get some stuff done, but I'm not in a position to off-the-cuff go after any of these items tonight, I just don't think it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully this is not part, his comments were not part of my 10 minutes, because I have a final suggestion, because, and this is based on Mayor Weiss's comments, and that is that we direct staff to come back with, with wording on a cap stakeholder committee, the creation of a cap stakeholder committee, also regarding, requiring full electrification for new buildings, and also for setting our clean energy target at 100% by 2035. That's bringing this back. If we weren't, if we don't feel, any of us feel that we're ready to do this tonight, then we can go ahead and do that by directing staff to come back with that.
Well, I heard Mr. Cunningham say he's already working on that.
Right, but earlier than two years, what I'm hearing, you know? I mean, we should be able to do this within 30 to 60 days. I mean, this was part of our study before, the 2035, the, the conversations that we had about clean energy targets, we already had that, it's, this is not new. This is revisiting our conversations that we had with our climate action plan adoption, so that's not anything new. That's our, that work has already been done. With respect to electrification, that was already conversations that were had at the planning stage of, you know, meeting with the public and discussing these, so that's not new. And the climate action plan, the cap stakeholder committee, that also was brought up, I believe, actually over a year ago, so. Right, but can, I mean, this is what you're, I'm following your recommendation that we direct staff, you said you had no problem doing that, to bring this back.
They said they were working on it. I'm not gonna be prepared to, well, I'm prepared to vote on the item tonight, but I got three other lights now, so.
Cassie, the rest of my time.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
I apologize to staff again for not being here for the last week before this, and I apologize for not having questions, and I suggest that everybody who comes here as a council member asks their questions ahead of time, so we're not playing this game. So what I'm asking for is your forgiveness for spending time on questions that I can get answered when I'm under normal circumstances. So in, in this case, I'm gonna call for the question.
Point of order was called before. Thank you. I cannot speak to the rest of the council members. These are not questions to staff, this is, these are requests for amendments directed to my colleagues here on the dais. This is not a question, can we do this? Absolutely, we can do this. Absolutely, we've had these conversations, so Councilmember Feller, I really take objection to your- So Councilmember Feller, I really take objection to your saying, suggesting that I could have asked these questions beforehand because I cannot talk to more than one person on the dais. To talk to all four of you, so that's all five of us, decision, it has to be done on the dais. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a call for the question and I'll second that. So we're going to vote on the call for the question. If that passes, we immediately go to a vote with no further discussion.
You mean, we're just pass, passing the ordinance, not?
So the first vote is, do we call for the question? If that passes, then it's a vote on the, it's vote on the motion and no further discussion by anybody.
What is that? Can you explain that call for the question? That's new to me, sorry.
Means to end debate. But nobody else speaks.
No, no further discuss.
Okay, who asked for that?
Jack called for the question. I seconded it.
Got it.
So the first vote will be on the call for the question.
So just stop speaking.
And everyone, we're done. So we have a motion and a second to call for the question. Please vote.
Approve, 3-2. Keim Sanchez, no.
And we have a motion and a second to adopt. Mr. Mullen, you need to title the ordinances?
Yeah, we'll have four ordinances, so bear with me. The first is Introduction of an Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, Amending Articles 10, 10(c)(11), 11(c)(12), 13, 13(c)(14), and 30 and 31 of the Oceanside Zoning Ordinance to Include Requirements for Electric Vehicle Parking and Electric Vehicle Charging Facilities. The next ordinance is the TDM ordinance, and that is Introduction of an Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, Amending Zoning Ordinance, Articles 10, 10(c)(11), 11(c)(12), 13, 13(c)(14), and 30 to Incorporate Requirements for Transportation Demand Management. Next is the Introduction of an Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, Amending Zoning Ordinance, Articles 10, 10(c)(11), 11(c)(12), 13, 13(c)(14), and 30 to Incorporate Requirements for Renewable Energy Facilities. And then the final ordinance is Introduction of an Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, Amending Articles 10, 10(c)(11), 11(c)(12), 13, 13(c)(14), and 30 to Include Urban Forestry Requirements.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
With that, we'll go to item 27, which is Introduction of an Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance in Regards to Updated Amendments as a Result of the State Accessory Dwelling Unit Regulations. And we'll open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
Public and as well the, I think we had about seven or eight contacts as far as the DU dwelling unit. So, and staff.
Staff and a number of emails that we received today.
Public.
And public.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Rob DiMouwski with the Planning Division. The request before you is a zoning text amendment and local coastal program amendment to amend Article 30, Section 3006 of the zoning ordinance to incorporate revisions to ADU law that became effective on January 1st, 2020, and to establish the amended text as part of the implementing document of the local coastal program. In recent years, the state legislature has enacted ADU legislation intended to streamline approval, reduce regulatory barriers and costs, and promote ADUs as a source of affordable housing in response to California's housing shortage. The legislation introduced several mandated ADU provisions that local jurisdictions must adopt in order to have a compliant ordinance. Oceanside adopted a compliant ordinance in 2017 and 18, and has since taken several steps to streamline, review, and promote ADU construction. Moving forward, the authors of the legislation were finding that several jurisdictions were still over-regulating ADUs and inhibiting production of them. In response, the new legislation was introduced in 2019 to further reduce regulatory barriers by establishing by right provisions that eliminate local agencies' ability to prohibit or excessively regulate ADUs. The legislation became effective on January 1st, 2020, and involved three bills specifically to the government code. In response to the new legislation, staff has completely rewritten the city's ADU ordinance to comply with the, with new state law. All previous provisions that were compliant have carried over and will remain in the ordinance. The following are the key changes that will be incorporated. The first new provision, referred to as the by right provision, now allows an ADU that is either 850 square feet for a one-bedroom or 1,000 square feet for a two-bedroom or more with four-foot side and rear setbacks and a maximum height of 16 feet. Nominal lot coverage or lots, lot size shall apply or other development standards. The new law introduces junior accessory dwelling units, which are basically a unit that has to be built within the footprint of the existing house or garage. It has a limitation of minimum size of 150 square feet and a maximum size of 500 square feet. And they're unique because they could have independent, they have to have a kitchen, but they could have an independent or a shared restroom facility. And there is a restriction that the property owner has to live on the premises, either in the primary unit or the ADU. And the third new provision related to junior units is considered a junior unit ADU combination where a junior unit can be built within the primary house and a new detached accessory dwelling unit can be built on the property. And it specifically has to be new construction with a maximum square footage of 850 square feet. There's a new provision where for an attached unit, the, the ADU can be 50% the square footage of the primary dwelling. There is no restriction on the maximum size. So for example, if a house was 4,000 square feet, a owner could potentially build a 2,000 square foot addition, subject to lot coverage and setbacks of the base zone district. One of the major changes involves the multifamily provision. And this allows for an existing multifamily development that can be a duplex or, or additional units, apartments, condominiums, and so on, that allows for the conversion of non-habital space into ADUs. And they are allowed to have up to 25% of the existing unit counts converted to accessory dwellings. So that would typically be a storage room or a garage. And there is also a provision where two additional detached ADUs can also be built on the property with four-foot side and rear setbacks, subject to the same height limitation. And one of the new provisions is related to the conversion of existing structure. A structure, whether it conforms or is considered non-conforming, can be rebuilt in the same footprint and dimensions as the previous structure. And there, there's no square footage limitation for the conversion of the structure. So if there's an existing 1,400 square foot garage, that entire garage could be converted to an ADU since it's an existing structure. The provision, there is no longer replacement parking required if a garage is converted into an ADU. Previously, the parking had to be provided onsite in some form. We find that most, most property owners still provide onsite parking in the form of a driveway or a side yard for convenience of the, the renter. The, the new law now prohibits short-term rentals of ADUs. We had previously included a prohibition on both short-term rental of the primary and accessory dwelling. That provision carries over. Building permit review has to be done within 60 days. We're well within, in that now with most ADUs reviewed in 14 to 21 days. And HCD now has the authority to review and approve ordinances for compliance. So if they find that an ordinance is out of compliance, they can refer that, that ordinance to the Attorney General for, for enforcement need be after working with the city to, to fix deficiencies. And some of the unchanged provisions, as mentioned, there's still a short-term prohibition on short-term rentals for both the primary and ADU. Architectural compatibility is required between the primary and the ADU. The minimum size is 150 square feet, and we still allow a maximum size of 1,200 square feet, subject to the, the lot coverage setbacks and height of the base zone district. So if they decide not to go with the by right provision, a property that's large enough can still benefit from the maximum square footage of 1,200. The parking waivers that were previously in effect, the half-mile from transit, the, the definition of transit is now defined as walking distance. It was previously as the crow flies. So there actually has to be accessible, accessibility to transit. The requirement for a covenant is still there that will be recorded against the property. And there are the impact fee reductions that were, were implemented in 2019 that waive all impact fees that the city has control over. The revisions to ADU law confirm the state's commitment to streamline and reducing the, the regulatory barriers for ADU construction. The city has recognized the importance of ADUs as a source of housing for residents as well as supplemental income for, for property owners. And since 2017, the city has received over 150 applications for ADUs. This year alone, we have 62 applications. And the proposed revisions will bring the ADU ordinance into full compliance with state law and will further streamline approval. On April 20th, the Planning Commission contacted the hearing and unanimously recommended approval to the council. No public comments were received. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council introduce an ordinance amending Article 30, Section 3006 of the zoning ordinance, adopt a resolution establishing the amended text as part of the implementing document of the local coastal program to incorporate the recent amendments to state accessory dwelling unit regulations and ensure that the city's ADU ordinance remains in full compliance with state law. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro?
On item number 27, the city clerk's office received five comments total for this item, three against with two with no position, and only one comment be asked, read into the record. The public comment is from Ayesha Jones. Dear Oceanside City Council, my name is Ayesha, and I have lived in Oceanside for the past 20-plus years. I would like to address item number 27 on the agenda. I request that this comment be read aloud and that you seriously consider allowing residents to participate in these city council meetings to increase transparency and accountability. While ADUs might be a good solution without rent control, we will continue to see empty houses and full streets. The cost of rent in Oceanside is incredibly high, and there hasn't been enough of an effort to change that. Most of us work for minimum wages at 40 hours a week, yet the average rent in Oceanside is 1,500 to 2,000 a month, more than two-thirds of our monthly income. We are in the middle of a pandemic, and we're terrified of losing our homes due to rising rent and lack of protection from eviction. We can't think about ADUs without making rent affordable. We have plenty of housing available. You simply need to lower the costs to make it attainable for all. I demand to know what you plan to do about this. Thank you, Ayesha. And that concludes the public comment on this item.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. Well, this, what's before us is to basically follow state law. So this is required. I'm going to go ahead and move introduction of the ordinance. And then, once it's seconded, I have some additional comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Quick question. The cap on additions of more than 1,500 square feet, you got to comply with a lot of those, you know, new changes. So how is this ordinance going to conflict with our cap? I don't, I know it's a, you might, might even want to step up on it. You know, because this is an ADU, and if you add on an ADU, if it's, you know, 1,501 square foot addition, are we going to, you know, how does state law conflict with our cap on that? With ADUs, with specifically the ADUs?
Councilmember Rodriguez, we do not intend to apply the renewable energy standard. I think that would be the most applicable one here to ADU development. So ADUs would be exempt.
Would be exempt?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. And I think that's, I think that's it. That's all I have. Thank you. I'll second that motion.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Does anybody else want to speak? Well, we know what the intent of this, of the state law is, and I'm surprised to see that now we can have two ADUs because that certainly is going to be impact on the neighborhood in terms of parking and traffic and all that. But one of the things that is, that has been linked to this discussion about ADUs and what, what was recently done in the city of San Diego was this notion, this idea about also allowing tiny homes. So that would be either a tiny home or, or an ADU, which is what was adopted by San, San Diego. So what I'd like to suggest tonight is that we direct staff to look at this and come back with recommendations on that. I think that basically the conversation here is how do we increase our housing stock to be able to increase, to be able to meet our RENA requirements and also be able to provide housing that is affordable? And so a second home, like a tiny home, I understand, is, cuts the cost a bit. It's still the whole notion of, you know, having, having something that is already on, on, on existing property that has a home. So that is my request that we direct staff to bring back language regarding tiny homes. That could be done either, like, like what San Diego did, either a tiny home or an ADU. And I don't know how this would fit on this, in this, but basically have staff look at that.
Mr. DiMouwski, I presume a tiny home would be considered an ADU and would qualify for the same provisions that are before us tonight?
Mayor Weiss, the, the state law is silent on tiny homes as a, a type of unit. So it can certainly, there is no prohibition on them. It can certainly be considered dwelling in it, subject to compliance with, it's, it's addressed under a different set of building code, I believe it's Title 22. So it is possible to, to permit them and make them a legal dwelling in it.
Thank you.
Is that a second?
I think he already seconded it. So we, we had a second on the motion, the original motion?
On the original motion, we had a motion by Councilmember Sanchez to introduce the ordinance, and that was seconded by Councilmember Rodriguez.
What I'm asking is for the additional direction.
He said they can already do it.
It needs direction from council.
No, he said they can do it. They can do it under this ordinance, to do tiny homes on the lot.
I didn't hear that. Could you say that, that under the, what you're proposing, tiny homes would be included?
Councilmember Sanchez, the, the language as written defines an efficiency unit, which is basically a unit that can be down to 150 square feet. So a tiny home isn't, there isn't a formal definition. There, there might be a similar term in the, in the building code. We can take a look at that. But if, if they can, if the unit can comply with the construction requirements and obtain a building permit necessary to, so you'd have to have water, sewer, and electrical hookup. So if it can meet those requirements, it could be considered a dwelling in it.
Well, except it could be separate, manufactured. So you're, you don't, so for someone to, to walk into, you know, once this is enacted, to walk in the next day and say, I want to, to put a tiny home, I want to move it on, it costs less to do, they can get a permit over the counter like, like the ADU?
There, there are architectural requirements that the, the ADU has to be architecturally similar to the, the primary house. So I know there, there's such a variety of tiny homes and options that it's, it's hard to, to say if all would qualify.
Let me, let me ask this. Let me ask our city attorney. Is that what you read? That, that if somebody wanted to do a tiny home in their backyard, they, that they could do that under this new, under these new laws and under our adoption of these new laws?
My understanding of the San Diego ordinance is that the tiny homes are built like on a chassis. They're not in a foundation. So I'm not sure. I'd have to look at Rob to see if those would be allowed under the existing ordinance if it's not on a foundation.
It's not on a foundation. That's what these tiny homes are.
Yeah, so we may, I, I think we understand the spirit of your question. I think we may need to do some research and do a memo to the council to determine if the San Diego type of tiny home would qualify under this. I don't know as I sit here now, but I think we could all put a memo together and get that to the council. And then if you want to put something on the agenda, we'd be happy to assist in that.
Is there any interest on bringing this back?
Sure, bring something back in a memo to the council. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
The council back here on, on the dais, right?
John said we'll do a memo to the council, then we'll see.
Yeah, I think we could collaborate with staff, do a memo to council to see if the San Diego ordinance, what's authorized, fits under our current ordinance or not.
Right, but to, to bring that, to, to actually calendar that, agendize it. But to bring that, to actually calendar that, agendize it.
That's called a council agenda item, and I encourage you to get with one of your colleagues to schedule future council agenda items.
You don't want to sign anything, so why don't we do that now?
You've never called me, Esther, so how do you know I won't sign something?
I'd like to see the information from, because the tiny homes I've seen are not necessarily just on a chassis. They can be on a foundation as well.
Well, I'm asking actually for the chassis.
I didn't know that.
That was the spirit of it.
Then I think we need to get the information from staff on San Diego and get that back to the council so we can at least look at it. We have a motion and a second on the main motion.
Mayor, this is the introduction of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside amending Article thirty, Section three zero zero six of the zoning ordinance to establish revised accessory dwelling unit regulations conforming to the provisions of Government Code Section six five eight five two point two and six five eight five two point two-two.
Motion approved. Five-oh.
Mr. Navarro, number twenty-nine?
Under item number twenty-nine off agenda items, the city clerk's office received twenty-one comments total, and of those twenty-one, the following wish to be read into the record. Our first comment is from Kimberly Fluharty, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your last name. Hello, my name is Kimberly Fluharty. I'm an Oceanside resident. I believe our city needs to establish an independent citizens review board to oversee officer-involved shootings, complaints, use of force incidences, and police misconduct. We urge you to create, fund, and implement an independent citizens review board for our public safety, and the following hashtags were used: public safety, accountability, transparency, trust, community, justice, data, local government, practical solutions, best practices, Oceanside Justice Package 2020. Our next public comment comes from Holly Davis. I, as a thirty-four-year resident of Oceanside and harbor slip renter, will continue to ask that the reorganization of marine public safety services within the city of Oceanside be put on the next agenda. We have a petition as of today that has two thousand four hundred and ninety-four signatures requesting this. The citizens of Oceanside need to be heard and represented. We are so lucky to have this beautiful marina, but safety should be the first priority for all. Please put this on the agenda. Sincerely, Holly Davis. Our next public comment comes from Sherry Mackin. Council, I am an Oceanside resident, and I believe our city needs to establish an independent citizens review board to oversee officer-involved shootings, complaints, use of force incidents, and police misconduct. I urge you to create, fund, and implement an independent citizen review board for our public safety. Sincerely, Sherry Mackin. Our next public comment is from Pat and Paul Guedbois. As individuals who have been Oceanside small craft slip permit holders for about twenty-five years, we would like to make the following observations. The harbor patrol's on-the-water safety services were far superior when the district maintained its own dedicated harbor patrol. The unit's highly trained, qualified, and professional safety officers were on duty twenty-four seven. Channel sixteen was always monitored, and an OSCHD harbor patrol officer was always available to help, rescue, or come to the aid of a vessel in distress. When not on the water, the officers walked to docks, getting to know their client base. They were often seen walking through the village, walking around the harbor, as well as patrolling on the water. If a boater was having mechanical problems on the water, they were only too happy to tow you back into the harbor and call it a training exercise. They truly focused on serving their client base of harbor boaters, stakeholders, and tourists. Now, they are largely invisible. More than once, there have been documented incidences of no OPD HP officers on duty during the weekends, weekends with large numbers of the public in the harbor and offshore. Boaters have observed that HP officers are frequently nowhere to be seen within the harbor districts one square mile. We realize that this is because they are patrolling the downtown and beachfront areas of Oceanside. For example, in the twenty-eighteen calendar year, the nine officers in the HP unit wrote one thousand and sixty-four citations, warnings, tickets, and arrest reports outside of the small craft harbor district. To have the record reflect this information validates the large percentage of their time spent on patrol outside of the district. The California Special Enterprise District is required to be self-supporting. Slip renters contribute a large of the income necessary to keep the district solvent. As such, we pay one hundred percent of the salaries for the nine officers that comprise the harbor patrol, and that is two minutes. The rest of the comments will be made available on the city clerk's website. The next public comment comes from Jane Marshall. Good morning. The OKC Oceanside Kitchen Collaborative at the Senior Center Green Kitchen has been preparing food for our seniors and homeless using donated food and supplies from area restaurants and distributors and an army of volunteers, but now the tables are empty. With COVID restrictions still impacting our community in ways large and small, for many, a fresh nutritious meal was one thing they could count on to get through the day. What happens now? We're talking about food for our vulnerable citizens. Surely, there is some kind of funding that can support this innovative, low-cost, zero-waste, volunteer-based, community service to feed people. Your prompt response is appreciated. Jane Marshall, thirty-year resident. Our next public comment comes from Analia Zamora de Hart. Hello, my name is Analia Zamora de Hart. I have been an Oceanside resident for thirteen years. I believe the city of Oceanside needs to establish an independent citizens review board to oversee officer-involved shootings, complaints, use of force incidents, and police misconduct. I urge you to create, fund, and implement an independent citizen review board for our public safety. Additionally, I believe the city of Oceanside needs to show its residents that the city is committed to recognizing an undue discrimination of any type. I urge you to create and implement a race and equity commission by January first, two thousand and twenty-one. Respectfully, Analia Zamora de Hart. Our next comment is from David Petit. As a slip renter in Oceanside Harbor, I support that a proposal be made to the reorganization of marine public safety services within the city of Oceanside and the Oceanside Small Craft Harbor District. I believe the added safety and decrease in cost is something that should be seriously considered. Thank you for your consideration of this proposal. David Petit. Our final public comment on off agenda items is from Alex Crasco. Hello, my name is Alex Crasco. I am an Oceanside resident. I believe our city needs to show our residents that the city of Oceanside is committed to recognizing an undue discrimination of any type. We urge you to create and implement a race and equity commission by January first, two thousand and twenty-one. And that concludes the public comment on off agenda items.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to item thirty, which is a request by Deputy Mayor Feller and Councilmember Keim to revise his salary schedule for council aides. Deputy Mayor, you're up.
Thank you. I just want to put on the record that one of my heroes is Vicky Prosser, my legislative aide. She's been a great backbone for fifteen, almost fifteen straight years, and this is one relationship I never wanted to end anyway, but it is, we're in a position that I believed we had come to terms with eliminating legislative aides, and then, when it changed, I got to think, and it's got to be all or nothing. And so, when the discussion, I was, I think maybe a little dumbfounded that we were in the position, but the discussion got out of hand and started reducing the pay by a certain percentage, whatever it was. It just, it was something that I just kind of went along with, but I talked it over with Ryan, and I think we're at a point that, Councilmember Keim, I mean, I think we're at a point that they need to be as our help, be able to be our assistants, and they should not be treated any differently than, I don't believe there's other people in our city staff that have been reduced in hours and that type of thing, other than maybe part-timers. So, I would like to see the council aide position go back to everything they had prior to June twenty-fourth and with retroactive pay, and that's my motion.
You got a second?
Yes. I second. I had some comments.
Sure.
The way, you know, when this initially came up, the council aide position, it's beginning of COVID, and the entire cost of the program was something that we needed to look at and see if it was something that we needed to cut, and that still could be the case going forward. What happened, however, was this morphed into initially an hour cut, but their salary, so that couldn't happen, so, and turned into a pay cut. And so, my aide, Janine, who has put in probably, you know, twenty percent more hours since COVID, working with me to help businesses get through this, was rewarded with seventeen percent less in pay arbitrarily, and I think it was just wrong, and I want to just apologize to staff for the extra work, but it's the right thing to do to just bring the pay to what it was before. So, I second the motion.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. When the item first came forward as cutting the aides by Councilmember Rodriguez and Councilmember Feller, I did not want to have the four people be laid off when nobody else was going to be laid off. It felt really badly, especially during a pandemic when, you know, nobody was going to be able to find a job, so they were going to have to be unemployed, and it was really, really tough with that. I especially was concerned about my aide as well. I mean, each one of us was concerned about our aides. So, rather than have that completely, a person like lose their job and lose their way of being able to support themselves and their families, the only thing that I can think of was some kind of reduction in hours to be able to save their jobs. I know my aide was really happy that I made that suggestion. I couldn't even think of how to save her job. So, yeah, reducing one day of pay out of five is twenty percent cut, but it was better than nothing. It was better than having zero income, again, during a time that we were all shut down. So, I'm going to support this. I certainly did not want to have our aides be hurt by, and especially be, made an example, I guess, the only ones that were going to be laid off. So, I am going to support this motion because I definitely did not want to see anyone, and I don't want to see anyone laid off. I want to, I'm hoping that we can continue within our budget. I know that it's at a great sacrifice because we're cutting down on maintenance, and we're freezing positions. So, that means that if there's a need in a department, then, you know, the rest of the folks are going to have to work extra hard to make up that, those tasks. And I'm looking at this as doing this together, as an organization, as a, we know a lot of our folks, we've known them for many, many years. We know their families. We know their kids. So, again, I'm going to support this, and I want to thank all city employees for what they're doing. Some even are having to wait longer. It's their time coming up to even have cost of living raises, and we're having to put that off. And so, I really thank you from the bottom of my heart that you are doing this. It's a great, big sacrifice that we're asking you to do. Thank you.
My position has been, I believe the aides should be replaced by an employee working out of the city manager's office. However, if we're going to have them, because that's clearly not going to happen, then I don't believe they should be disproportionately burdened than any of the other employees. So, I will support this as well. We have a motion and a second.
Motion approved. Five-oh.
Mr. Mullen, thirty-one?
This is the adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside, California, amending Chapter seven of the Oceanside City Code and Articles four, fourteen, and thirty-six of the zoning ordinance to remove the medical-only limitation on approved commercial cannabis cultivators.
I have a question for Mr. O'Brien. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Sanchez?
Sneaky now. No. Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second.
Motion approved. Four-oh-one. Feller, no.
And with that, we will be adjourning to our next regularly scheduled meeting at three-thirty on Wednesday, August nineteenth, and if you could join me, please, in a moment of silence for the marines and sailors that lost their lives.